...Commissioners meeting on this Tuesday, May twenty-six, two thousand and fifteen. We have with us Reverend John Iskett, the pastor of Faith Baptist Church that will lead us in the invocation. Commissioner Harvey will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. And just prior to the pledge of allegiance, we will have a moment of silence in honor of Memorial Day and the fallen heroes who certainly have gone on before us. So let's all please stand. Pastor Iskett.
Precious Heavenly Father, we pray today for the meeting, that it would go smoothly and well, and much would be accomplished. We pray especially, Lord, for the Commissioners and our other county officials. We pray, dear God, that they would have your wisdom, your guidance and direction. We pray, Lord, that more than anything, they would understand that we appreciate their service, and churches pray for them. We pray, dear God, that you would help each of them to know that, to know your personal relationship with Christ. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's do our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you again to all of our citizens who have come to join in with our proceedings this morning. Item three on the agenda this morning is a proclamation to be presented declaring May as Drug Court Month. We do have the Honorable Judge Libby Morris with us. And Judge Morris, if you will meet me up front, Commissioner Libbo will present this proclamation for action by the board.
Proclamation number two thousand and fifteen dash forty-three. Whereas drug courts are effective tool for reducing substance abuse and crime in our criminal justice system, and whereas for over twenty-six years, drug courts have been restoring lives, reuniting families, and making communities across the nation safe through nearly three thousand operational drug courts. And whereas drug courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health professionals in the fight against drug abuse and criminality. And whereas research shows that drug courts are demonstratively effective and significantly improve substance abuse treatment outcomes, substantially reduce drug abuse and crime, and do so at a lower cost than any other justice strategy. And whereas the judges, attorneys, treatment and rehabilitation professionals, law enforcement and community supervision personnel, researchers and educators are healing communities. And whereas since the Putnam County Adult Drug Court operation began in two thousand and two, a hundred and fifty-six people have graduated. Sixty-nine percent had no new drug charges in three years following successful completion of the program. And the retention rate is remaining at fifty-nine percent. And whereas the Putnam County Board of Commissioners recognize the successful work of the practitioners and participants of drug court programs to reduce the impact of drug abuse in our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners in meeting assembled on this twenty-sixth day of May two thousand and fifteen, that the month of May two thousand and fifteen is hereby declared Drug Court Month in Putnam County. And all citizens are urged to recognize the significant contributions of drug courts and congratulate this year's drug court graduates. Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer a motion supporting this resolution's proclamation.
Second.
We do have a proper motion and a couple of seconds that the proclamation be approved. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. We do all favor this, and we do have some comments from our beloved Judge. It is a privilege to know how successful the program is. We often wonder about success rates with various programs, but we do know this is a proven program in our county, and we're just extremely grateful to have leadership such as yourself. And I know that it does take team efforts, and I'm sure you're going to address that with us now. So please feel free to do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Let me get this up here for the tall people. Well, good morning. For those in the audience who may not know me, I am Elizabeth Morris, and I am the presiding judge of the Putnam Felony, the Putnam Adult Felony Drug Court. It is a team effort, Commissioner Flag. I am the leader of the team, but I can't do it without a team effort. It involves treatment, it involves probation, it involves law enforcement, it involves just the clerk's office. I mean, everybody works together to make this thing work. And so the first thing I would like to do is ask my drug court team to stand up so that I can introduce them to you.
You can bring them down front if you choose.
Okay.
We would prefer that.
Come on, folks, come on down.
Bring them down and...
Well, as you can see, the men coming down in green from the sheriff's office here, this is Joe Wells, and this is Jared Guy, and they both work on our team. And then we have Suzette Young, she is our senior drug court counselor. And we have Miley Reeves, she's with the Palacca Police Department, and she is working with us. We also have Dr. Vicky Buckle, she is the head of the program at Stuart Marchman. Jeff Kramer is our other counselor. This gentleman is Mr. Mike Jewell, he's with the Seventh Circuit Court Administration, and he is our drug court manager for all four counties in the circuit. He keeps us all in a cohesive manner. So these are the folks that make it work. Y'all can even see. We also have a lot of our current drug court participants here and some of our past drug court participants, and a few of them have a few things they would like to say too, if you've got a moment to listen to them. But first, let me say that I want to again express our appreciation for the continued funding and the continued support that Putnam County provides to the Putnam Adult Felony Drug Court, because without that funding, this drug court could not operate. But I invite any of you down on Wednesday afternoon at two-thirty to see some life-changing experiences. We also do graduations three times a year. I've seen various of you Commissioners there, and I appreciate you coming. And it is just an opportunity, we take an opportunity and give someone up to three years, most of them don't take that long, but every now and then we have some that do, to really turn their life around through counseling, random drug screening, you know, just learning new things about life and how to live a drug-free life and a substance-free life. When you think about it, about the cost of this program, the last numbers I looked at, I think that we dedicate about seven to eight thousand dollars per person, and the person is in our program for an average of about eighteen months. And the last statistics that I looked at indicated that it costs this state between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars for one year to have a person in prison. So we are really getting some bang for our buck, and we are creating, again, citizens who are productive in our society, they are parents, they have jobs, they're taking care of their children. Many of them have reconnected with family members and friends, you know, that's one of the things, we all know how drug abuse or substance abuse affects a person's life and the family around them. It burns a lot of bridges, but this program gives them an opportunity to rebuild some of those bridges, and they really take that opportunity and run with it and work with it. So at this point, I'm going to just turn the podium over to some of my current participants or past participants, if they've got some comments they'd like to make. Come on down. Introduce yourself.
I'm J.D. Hyatt. I was in drug court probably about two years ago. I spent approximately about three years in drug court. You know, it was, it was a long road, very, it was a struggle, but at the same time, it was a life-changing experience. My life is the best it's ever been today. My body is in the best shape I've ever been, financially stable. I live down in Clearwater, Florida. I'm a certified arborist through the ISA Florida Chapter. You know, I've worked really hard to get to where I am today, and I tell myself that I ain't gonna let nothing stop me to get to where I wanna go. And, you know, for me, it was, it took, it took something that was extravagant and very life-changing in my life that I lost to make me realize that I had to find something to use for motivation, to keep myself, to push myself forward. And I just wanna, wanna thank drug court, thank Putnam County and State of Florida, you know. Y'all really did restore me, and I got my life back, and it's better than it's ever been. I wanna thank my family, my grandmother, my grandfather, I lost him whenever I was in eighteen-month rehab. And, you know, he's still here with me today. I wanna thank him, he helped me get through drug court, and he gave me the motivation I have today, that's the reason why I'm still here and doing what I'm doing. And I wanna thank Ms. Jackie, Ms. Suzette, and Judge Morris, and everybody in drug court, Captain Wells. You know, it's just, it's very fortunate that we have this in our county, because there is, you know, I come back here a lot, and this is, this is very needed, you know, for certain people. It was for me. So I wanna thank y'all, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. My name's Leeson Tyler. I just wanna thank drug court, you know, they gave me my life back. You know, they showed me a better life, you know, without drugs. You know, my brother passed away in two thousand and ten. I felt like I was the cause of it, because I wished it upon him, and then the next morning I walked in and he was dead. So I used drugs, you know, to cover up, you know, the grief, the hurt, the hatred I had against myself. You know, I shut everybody out of my life, I started hanging out with the wrong people, I started stealing, doing more drugs. And, you know, I thank God every day, you know, for putting me in that jail cell, and, you know, and I thank God for drug court giving me that chance, you know, to show them that I am a good person, that I do have a good heart. And, you know, without drug court, I wouldn't be where I'm at today. You know, I own my own business, it's going really good, you know, I got a beautiful wife, I got amazing kids, I love them to death, you know, I wouldn't trade it for anything in the world. I got the best support group, which is my family, especially my mother, you know, and I wouldn't have that if it wasn't for drug court. You know, some people drug court's not for because they don't wanna change, but certain people like me and the people that's in drug court right now, you know, it gives them a chance to better theirselves, you know, the people that want it. Because I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, I would never go back to that lifestyle, you know, trying to figure out when I'm gonna get high, when I can get high, you know, how am I gonna get the next high? I just, I don't wanna live like that no more. I like waking up every morning knowing that I can go eat a bowl of cereal instead of worrying about getting high. You know, I can actually spend time with my kids, you know, spend time with my family, laugh, giggle, open up to people, and I love it. I wouldn't change it for anything. I wanna thank Ms. Suzette for tough love. It's like a second mantra to me right there. You know, Judge Morris for believing in me, giving me a second chance, Ms. Jackie, Captain Joe Wells, you know, everybody that's in drug court, you know, they're here for us. And I wanna thank y'all, you know, for supporting drug court, and, you know, drug court really does work, and I think it's the best program in Putnam County, you know, for people like me. So I just wanna thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you.
How you guys doing today?
Good morning, sir.
My name's Jason, and I'm an addict, and I'm currently in drug court. I just wanna talk for a second about, you know, they talk about the effects of addiction, like, on this county, the things that it does to this county. I used for twenty years, I'm thirty-six years old. I tried and tried and tried numerous times to stop using drugs on my own. I always thought I could do it on my own. As a man, I didn't like to admit that, that something had me beat like that. I went to jail fourteen months ago with twenty-seven charges. I have seventeen prior arrests here in Putnam County, and that's just in Putnam County. I did a lot of, a lot of things to, at the time, I didn't realize it, but it affected this county as far as court costs and things like that. In two thousand and six, everybody in drug court, everybody talks about loss. I lost three really good friends. Matter of fact, here recently, I lost a friend that overdosed from heroin. Since I've been in drug court, I've lost quite a few different people. And before, the way I dealt with that was getting high and being mad at the world, and when you, when you wanna get high, you sometimes, well, most of the time, you do something illegal to get it. But since I've been in drug court, I've been clean fourteen months now, the longest in twenty years that I've, that I've been clean. I've held a job for over a year now. I look at things a lot different, and I, the drug court team has really helped me figure out who I should've been the whole time. I, I thank God for drug court, because I don't, I know that without drug court, I'd still be out there doing the same stuff that I was doing. And as far as drug court being good for this community, I, I know that it was good for me. I can't say for anybody else, but I know that it was good for me. And I just wanna thank you guys for supporting it. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who has a few words they wanna say? I do want to, I forgot to recognize Jackie Yinks, the glue that holds us all together. She is taking a much-needed vacation, but we appreciate her so much and couldn't make it work without her. And I'm not gonna ask the rest of my folks to introduce themselves, but I would just like, if you're here with drug court this morning, please stand up. We're just here to thank you and ask you for your continued support, and we appreciate it. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you, Your Honor. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we express our appreciation to all who work to make this program successful, and to all of the participants. We've heard your testimony, representative testimony of some of the challenges that you face, and know that you do have our support, and our support is to make, to ensure that complete transformation takes place in your life, so that you can join other productive citizens and make our county a county that is desirable for all to live and to thrive in together. So thank you again for being open and honest. We're not in denial. We know that it is a very serious challenge for us all, but we want to encourage you so that you will know that, yes, you can conquer whatever you make up your mind to conquer. So thank you again, and God bless us all. Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, approval of minutes from May twelve, two thousand and fifteen, regular meeting.
Approval, Mr. Chairman.
Proper motion.
Second.
Second, further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very kindly. Under item four, our public comments, which is a part of all of our regular meetings, this is part of the agenda designed to allow any of our citizens to come forth within a three-minute timeframe to bring matters to our attention. It is not reasonable to expect that we will engage and debate, debate our deliberation concerning those matters in which we have not had opportunity to research. We ask that again, you're limited to comments to three minutes, and the cards are conveniently placed at both entryways coming in, and please submit them to our deputy clerk so that we will have record. It is not required, but it is certainly encouraged that you do that, so that we will have a way to communicate if it's necessary. Mr. Earl Ballengee, your concern is an item F for us to pull for discussion purposes on the consent agenda, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we will discuss, we will discuss that when we get to the consent agenda. Mr. James Harrell, public funds on private roads. Good morning.
I have ten copies here for y'all to pass around.
Okay.
Just got three minutes, I gotta rush. You let me go before the tax collector's. Ah, must be big. Anyway, I thank you for, first let me thank you for cleaning out the ditch out there on Davis Lake to nineteen, that was great, appreciate that, and, and I appreciate y'all helping the drug court, giving people a second chance. Recently, I have issue with the use of public funds on private roads. I have, I have issues still with the use of sixty-four hundred dollars to relocate the St. John's building entrance out on Stokes Landing. First, I wish to bring your attention to the four-twenty-eight, two thousand and fifteen Transportation Committee Minutes under maintenance and repair of private cupboards. Tony's Minutes tells that Mr. Palasias stated that he believed the county should make the necessary repairs due to its use of drainage ditch for water coming through the cupboard under a county road. Mr. Castleberry stated that the county may use public funds on private property if deemed necessary for the overall health and well-being of the community. Now let me bring your attention to page two and three of my handout that shows my late mother standing in a ditch, standing in what was the washed-out Lady Lane, in the middle of the washed-out Lady Lane. County attorney in that, if you look on page three, I took two pages of it there, the article in the Placada Island News said, "County Attorney Russ Castleberry and Public Works Director Robert Milton Burton needs to conduct an investigation to determine if the county is at fault." If you remember, and it also says other things on there, but if you can read it. Anyway, that's what it said in the Placada Island News. "If you remember, the county would not fix that dangerous situation for years, and only after everybody had deeded their easement over to the county." Now, if you go down to Lady Lane, you will find that water goes under Stokes Landing Road before it gets to Lady Lane. This is exactly the same situation as with one sixty-eight Buffalo Bluff Road, in which the county had no problem replacing that cupboard for a simple crack, it was about three or four foot in it, but it was a crack, it wasn't stopped up or anything, at one end of the cupboard. Now, how can the past policy be correct and your current policy be correct? Something is wrong. I got only just one more paragraph. Either the county should give the people of Lady Lane a public apology and maybe compensation for the damage of having the road closed for years, or the county should go and dig up that cupboard they just put in at one sixty-eight Buffalo Bluff Road, which just had a three-foot crack. It's the same situation. As you have said, Mr. Brother Flag, I am a little superficial on this, and I says I'll still be superficial until I get a satisfactory explanation of these events in the past and present, and how y'all can change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. I will just repeat the paragraph that says, "Mr. Castleberry discussed the issue and stated that the county may use public funds on private property if deemed necessary for the overall health and well-being of the public," and then there was discussion that followed. There are no two situations in Putnam County that's going to be identical as it relates to the specificity of each of those cases. However, it will be handled on a case-by-case basis, and anytime anyone feels that there is discrepancy on policy and process and procedure in Putnam County, please don't hesitate to contact the proper authorities so that we can make sure, because I certainly do not want to be a part of a team that's doing anything that is immoral, illegal, not appropriate according to the rules. So thank you again. Next speaker is Ms. Carrie Swope, Interlaken.
Good morning. Carrie Swope, one thirty-seven Oak Crest Drive in Interlaken. Just over one hundred years ago, two brothers, Orville and Robo Wright, flew the first successful manned flight in a powered, heavier-than-air vehicle on December seventeenth, nineteen oh three. This occurred at Kitty Hawk, North Carolina. At the time, they were not known as aeronautical engineers by trade, they made bicycles at their shop in Dayton, Ohio. They dreamed hard, they worked hard, and thought outside the box. The Wright brothers embodied the motto of the United States Air Force, which is to aim high. Nowadays, airplane travel is a commonplace thing, and we have to thank the Wright brothers and other aviation pioneers who created the new technologies which we now take for granted. The A-Page presentation at last Tuesday's May nineteenth workshop is an opportunity for Putnam County to aim high and partake in advancing new waste-of-power or waste-of-fuel technology. All of the Board of County Commissioners needs to do, all the Board needs to do, is to have an open mind. First, you need to rezone the unused acreage at our landfill to be used for new technology waste disposal only. Second, put out a request for proposal, or RFP, for purchase of this property for new technology exclusively. Third, only accept offers that will pay for the plant without tax incentives or any county funds. Fourth, assist and facilitate the building of the new plant, desist from placing any unnecessary roadblocks on the project. As an added bonus, A-Page agrees to purchase the empty county-old building in the industrial park of which the county paid for, using Better Place Plan tax funds to the tune of over two million dollars. These funds could then be returned to the Better Place Plan coffers. Please note that even if A-Page went out of business after a couple years, Putnam County would have greatly benefited, benefited from the regular jobs and construction jobs. But realistically, any company willing to invest three hundred million of their own money is going to try their darndest to succeed. Commissioners, I urge you to aim high and welcome new technology into Putnam County to solve our landfill dilemma. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swope. Do you have a copy of that that's available for our clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. It's fine, leave us a copy, that would be nice of you. Thank you so much for your presentation, and we will aim high. Ms. Faith Bartman, you're the next speaker. Good morning.
Today, each one of you had something very handmade and special for each one of you, and I gave Tony's to her for that whole side. Those were handmade in honor of Memorial Day for us all to remember why we're here and why you can sit in your seats and I can stand here. They're sun catchers, you hang them in the window. The other part of mine, Mr. Flag, is I'm gonna use your word of wisdom, share. I read these a lot. I want to share something very special, we're gonna go back in history. I hope that you all know who Thomas Edison is. Well, in the little town of Sunbury, Pennsylvania, which is not as big as Palacca, sits Thomas Edison Hotel, where I was born and raised. He invented the light bulb there. That's on Main Street, you go down to Front Street on the water, and guess what? Westinghouse built the biggest plant there was, the first one. You have somebody sitting in the audience, if both of her parents worked there. They made washers, dryers, refrigerators. Westinghouse does not stand behind anything that is not pull-through. If they put their name on something, you can guarantee it's gonna be there. So when I listened to you on YouTube, I knew I had to share this with all of you. The other thing where I come from, the word soda pop, does that mean anything to you? It was founded right where I come from. That's how you got your sodas. The next thing where I come from, a little town, oxygen, people breathe, welders use it, we use it everywhere. So I just wanted to share some history with you all today and let you know that Westinghouse... that Westinghouse is a very reputable company. As a matter of fact, I think it was about three years ago, we finally had to throw out an old Westinghouse dryer that was forty years old. So, they do stand behind our products. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly, Ms. Bartman. Really do appreciate your participation. Mr. Robert Bly, you're the next speaker, please.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
Robert Bly, one sixteen Sand Lake Drive, Pomona Park, Florida. Um, I have some questions. Specifically, why are we not discussing the landfill and proposal made last week by A-page? And engineers that testified for the A-page project. It's, it's my understanding that you're already in budget hearings and will soon be setting the tax rate for property owners in Putnam County. I believe that a decision should be made by this commission immediately for using modern technology in dealing with Putnam County's garbage and issuing an RFP to have our waste transferred out of Putnam County until a facility can be built. Both decisions would significantly reduce the tax burden on Putnam County property owners in two thousand sixteen and into the future. Uh, two of you commissioners have been making decisions for the taxpayers of Putnam County for seventeen years and nineteen years respectively. In that time, Putnam County has become the poorest county in Florida with the highest unemployment rate. During the last sixteen, uh, during the last six years, the Putnam County Sheriff's Office is now ranked as the tenth most militarized agency in the state of Florida, partially because you voted time and again to allow the sheriff's office to accept vast sums of money and military equipment. In a survey last week of three hundred and one Florida cities, Palaca was judged the second-worst city to live in based on among other factors, the poor economic viability and the lack of jobs. I believe you could've done a better job for Putnam County and its citizens. Some of you wish to hold on to the Putnam County landfill as if it were a golden cow. However, the engineering agency that placed such a high market value on the landfill has a horse in the race and a reason to maintain it as landfill. It is a garbage pit, nothing else. It, it's a garbage pit that causes dangerous chemicals like benzene to be leached into our soil and water supply. A garbage pit that Putnam County's grandchildren won't have to pay and clean up in, in the future at great expense. A-page has offered Putnam County millions for land the county is not using. Economic improvement, good-paying jobs, technical training, and scholarships for high school students, all at no expense to Putnam County taxpayers. And I ask you, has any other proposal for the landfill offered so much? So, I ask you again, why are we not discussing landfill today and making a decision?
Thank you for your question, and thank you so much for your opinion. Uh, we are methodically, uh, going through this process. Uh, you were here last week when we all heard the presentation. There were presentations before that presentation, and there have been questions since that presentation. And so, so that we are not continually bashed as if we're not paying attention. We do have to do our homework, and so that's why it's not being discussed today because it's not time certain yet, but it will be discussed.
I'm glad to hear that it's still on the agenda.
Sir, it's no way for it to disappear. We, we are prepared to make some very tough decisions as a commission uh, there, and we just wanna make sure that there's method, time, madness, and ram-tie reason. Thank you very kindly. Mr. Craig Sharar, you're the next speaker. Please come forward.
Craig Sharar, one forty-seven Pine Tree Road, uh, two matters. In the last two weeks, there was a survey that Palaca was the second-worst city in the state of Florida. Thank God for Fort Pierce. And USA Today issued about two weeks ago something of all the worst counties in the entire United States, and we gained it for number one for, uh, Florida. Whatever y'all are doing, you gotta stop. Now, having said that, since ditches seem to be an issue, maybe this is one reason why we're the worst county in the state of Florida. There are ditches along two oh seven A and Carter Crabtree Row that you guys have cleaned out so much that if you go out there today, there's three feet of standing water because the bottom of the ditch is three feet below the culvert. On my street, it's been cleaned out once. Now, I understand, and when Walt Oliver was there, and I'm having discussions with him still today, after ten years, I understand that my street doesn't deserve to get cleaned out every year. Two oh seven A doesn't need to get cleaned out anymore because you're already below the culvert level. The culvert across Pine Tree Road is half-full of dirt. When Walt Oliver was here, he told me he was gonna get the culvert cleaned, but it wouldn't do any good because from two, from Pine Tree Road to two oh seven A was privately-owned property. Maybe it was, maybe it wasn't. I said, "I don't care. I will pay people to clean it if you guys will clean the culvert. That way, the water will flow." I laid out five hundred bucks, got a team of guys in there. We cleaned the ditch out on the privately-owned property, and no one has ever come to clean the culvert. Now, it doesn't do me any good to clean the ditch if the culvert is half-full of dirt. And it doesn't do any good to have the ditches upstream from the culvert if the culvert is half-full of dirt because it just acts as a dam. Now, it's on Pine Tree, though. Y'all did build a culvert and a ditch system, which I don't know why, because it doesn't go anywhere, but now it's been built. It has never been cleaned. And the intervening culverts have never been fixed. They're all collapsed. Now, I don't know what y'all's policy is. Y'all can sit there and make up anything you want about this is in the public good. You know, what's in the public good is in the public good when it's in your good. It's not in the public good when it's not in the public good when it's not in your good. That's fine. But you know what? There's a thing called the angle of repose. The angle of repose is if you take a material and you pour it out, the angle that it sits at, ball bearings sit like this. Sugar and sand and everything sits like this. When your ditch is like this and your road is here, one day that sand is gonna say gravity needs to take over. And you're gonna lose two oh seven A, and you're not gonna lose it gradually. It's gonna be catastrophic. You don't believe me? That's that man there. He's got a degree in engineering. That's your Public Works Director. Please stop digging the ditches on two oh seven A because you're below. And by the way, somebody once told me that those were dug out that way so they would be holding ponds for sediments coming off of the fields, which is really funny because the farmers put batter boards up in the culverts to keep the water level up in the ditches. The reason they do that is because if you keep the water level up in the ditch, it keeps the water level up in the field, which means the plants get the water easier. So, stop digging the ditches. Take care of some of the rest of us. And like I said, I don't expect my ditch to be cleaned up every year, but once in ten years, I think I'm due for another cleaning. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly, Mr. Sharar. For the benefit of those who, again, uh, we receive information about all of the studies about Putnam County, none of those individuals who are writing those studies live here. Anybody can say we're anything. Who do we say we are? That's my question, and that's my challenge to the citizens of Putnam County. Who do we say we are? And if we act like what others say we are, then certainly that is not in anybody's best interest. And all of us can be better. We can do better. We can work together better and, and improve our community every single day. We can do that, but it's gonna take a collective effort on everybody's part. Uh, that is the conclusion of the speaker's card. Are there any other comments from anyone that did not fill out a speaker's card? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Roxanne Weeks. I'm at two oh five Nellie Street, Palaca.
Morning.
Um, I wanted to thank the Planning and Development Department. I came here a couple of meetings ago, addressed the commission about the spay and neuter, the lack of follow-up. Uh, the following week, that resulted in, um, new adoption papers being done specifically about the spay and neuter. And I'm happy to say that I got a message from my friend day before yesterday that we had helped, uh, get a dog to, that she said on the twenty-seventh day, A and A C Animal Control called her up wanting the spay and neuter papers, and we're following up. So, I'd like to thank them for doing that job and commend them on a good job.
We appreciate you for coming to acknowledge that. Thank you very kindly. Reverend K. Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Leroy K. Moore, one one seven Gladys Avenue, East Palaca, Florida. I'm here this morning. Everybody can get a culvert mostly of work done but me. All of last year, I had them out there. I think you was out there but the flag, you was out there and on my road. Now, I went over to get a permit, uh, us getting out a permit, but to get them in there, the county to clean it. They said they don't come on private property, but the ditch don't belongs to me. The ditch belongs to the county. Now, there are some more places over there. You're not helping me. When you open up on the other side of two oh seven there, the water come to us and the buck stops there. I was in there with the TV cameraman last week. We looked at everything. We can't get nothing. The road is running in the ditch. Still doing it. You been out there, you seen it. It's still doing it. Nobody come out there and do anything. I even asked, "Could I fix it?" The lady say, "You need a certified contractor to go down and pull a hundred-dollar permit to do the work." What happened? What happened to America? Used to be we'd go down there and pay the money, get a little permit, and we could fix things around. Now, you gotta have somebody certified to do these things, and everything fall into pieces round here, even the roads. I agree with everything they would say, and, and I'm just gonna be honest. Y'all set up there, and I hope you don't get mad with them. If you do, you'll get over it. Uh, but the thing is, y'all don't care nothing about us. All you do is take our money. I been begging you, been asking. Road grader come along there, you seen a pile of minor sand where you go in my driveway. All of this kinda stuff. But you care about the people. You do the thing for the, uh, the benefit of the people, but it's not helping us. Every time it rain out there, water come down like Mount Rushmore across two oh seven there, and it stops in there where we at. We ain't got no machine. We ain't got nobody to run the machine. Them the excuses. When we had the oil abode in here, I have to go back to it, they put a drag line in there and cleaned, and we ain't had them problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend K. Moore. Uh, Mr. Jacobovich, this afternoon, if you will, address both of these in the transportation workshop so that we will have the most current information off of the Pine Tree two oh seven A as well as the Gladys Avenue, please, uh, so that we can, we can, um, address that. Thank you, Reverend K. Moore. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. John Spell, one oh six Sister Lane. I'm here to speak on the behalf of the same thing everybody's saying. Now, I mentioned a while back how deep they digging all these ditches along the roads. You're losing the shoulders. Walt made a comment, "We ain't losing the road." When you get a ditch four and a half foot deep to the point to where the shoulder of the road is gradually washing in, you will lose the shoulder. And I notice every time that they clean ditches now, they digging ditches six inches below the culvert. On Walt Road out there, or Stokes Landing, they just done a ditch out there. You get to the main crossing, you that much below the culvert, and I thought anytime they dug ditches, they supposed to have locate to come out, but they have a phone wire also cut in that area. But it's just the thing about, you know, the quality of the work that the county is doing really i- is shameful because I would take even a little more pride in my work. And I bring it to your attention on how they take that grade all and compact the ground with it. I was at the house with the television on, and I heard beep, beep, bam, bam. They bamming the, compacting the ground with the grade all. That machine was not designed for that. Now, I want all of y'all to go and check the work orders on repair work that have been done on that grade machine within the last year and find out what's all wrong with it. When I was out in bar and cutting hay, they was doing the same thing. I was, they was right at the little creek by Bud's Grocery. I was all the way down in front of Kramer's Place, and I could hear the impact of them tampering the ground with the grade all. And within a week or two after then, it was in the shop. But y'all sit here and go by what your engineers say, and don't do no researching or trying to find out anything from anybody about anything. They just put a culvert underneath Putnam Boulevard on a curve. They put a culvert on for water to go from one side to the other, but it ain't got nowhere to go. So, why would you rip the road up to put a culvert to going nowhere on the left-hand side? The culvert is about six inches below the grade of the ground on the other side. So, why would you rip the road up? We got enough speed bumps. They took and looked like they sprayed that their, um, paint or something on McCormick Road. Mr. Flag, it's a disgrace, but it has been as long as it has been, and they hadn't went and fixed McCormick Road. Lewis-Briar Road, they put a patch in one of the little spots by one of the water drains, and it's below grade. Now, water set in there, then you have another pothole. And my biggest thing is if y'all can take a vote on it, let me know at the next meeting, can I turn my cows out along the road and get some of the grass cut? We hadn't had no grass cutting yet, nowhere that I've seen, and Saint John County done mowed grass twice. It's pitiful how this county is looking, and y'all talk about the Better Place Plan. That lady with those thick glasses talking about it was so degrading on my sign. Tell her to ride round now and look what we got for the Better Place Plan. I don't look at the ones that lost on, no. I look at everybody lost, 'cause since it went through, we hadn't got nothing done of no quality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spell. And again, uh, some of the issues, ditch digging, protocol, and things of that nature, we will be raising those issues in our transportation meeting. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other comments, public comments? Okay, at this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we will come back to the consent agenda. Thank you. Like to call us back in session. On the consent agenda, Commissioner Lava, do you have any items to be pulled for discussion?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Palasier.
I have none.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes, I'd like to talk about item H, please.
Item H. Okay, um, per citizen request, Mr. Earl Ballenge, um, item F, Appointment of Solid Waste Collection Contract Evaluation Committee, um, page twenty-nine. And the county issued an RFP for solid waste collection services on April twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen. Proposals are due on June the fifth, two thousand fifteen. The RFP calls for the board to designate a selection committee to evaluate the proposals, rank the proposers, and make a recommendation regarding the order of the contract. Board may wish to consider the appointment of the county administrator, solid waste director, and the finance director. Commissioners?
Uh, move approval of the remaining consent agenda.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna take it after we've, uh, dealt with these two items. I wanna know whether you have any comments about what the recommendation is, uh, as it relates to the makeup of the, um, of the committee. I thought we had mentioned at one meeting that we wanted the, um, the chair to, um, to be in on that meeting, um. But what, what is your thought? What are your thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I, I wouldn't have any objections to that, but I also would like to, at one time, I remember serving on this committee as a private citizen, and I would like for us to consider our two previous chairmans of our solid waste committee to be on that, uh, on there too with the knowledge that they have.
We evaluating proposals, and I'm not so sure that we need to, um, expand, uh, beyond having, um, I mean, it's all gonna be public record, uh, so again, we can, we can discuss that further.
Mr. Chair, when this was done in the past, and I'm sure you have no knowledge, but Mr. Castleberry or Mr. Leary Wood, what's been the policy, who sets on that committee?
This contract has not been bid.
This contract has not been bid out in fifteen or twenty years or more. And remember, it's strictly dealing with collection, nothing else.
Do we have a policy in place from fifteen years ago that it was then? This would be totally new to be established?
We didn't look.
Okay.
But as a rule, the, uh, contracts are RFPs when they come back in. Don't you have, uh, I know it depends on the specific contract, but you know, the administrator, um, the attorney, just, you know, verifying it and purchase agent, purchasing agent, or purchasing director. I mean, it's always been an in-house committee for these kind of RFPs or not?
Yes, generally speaking, yes.
But I remember I sat on that one, that one fifteen years ago. I remember David Buckles and I both served on it.
We didn't bid it out fifteen years ago.
Well, whatever.
I'm not sure what you're talking about, so.
I remember going through all the different proposals that came in. It was pretty informative, so.
Well, we had that input, Mister Chair, because, um, as committee, when we put this RFP out, we had language, we had chance to weigh in on the language and what we agreed to do. And, uh, it's still in print and is our guiding source when we, we picked the winner of the RFP for this.
Well, again, it's, it's, it's simply going to come, um, when, when it's time to do that, it's gonna still come to us as a recommendation. Right now, all we're doing is recommending the makeup of the, um, uh, the committee who's evaluating the proposals, uh, there. And it's gonna be based on the RFP itself. So, um, does, are there any modifications to what is recommended?
I have no problem with the three there, but, but on that.
I don't either.
I don't either.
For the board.
Okay, all right. Item H, administration grant agreement with True Trust Incorporated for Economic Development Grant Funds. Item H, page thirty-one through thirty-five. Mister Harvey?
Uh, Mister Chairman, if you look at page thirty-two, and I just wanna kinda bring this up for the audience. And, uh, this is an exciting time for Putnam County to look at doing some economic development here. This company currently wants to expand their, um, footprint here in Putnam County, their business, and retain their jobs. And in turn, we're going to have a, a incentive for them not, for us not to expend over thirty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. What's exciting to me, when you do the math on the back of the envelope like I did, um, and Mister Jones and I were discussing it this morning, you could be seeing if they do go from where they're at now, their current facility is two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of assessed value to go up to almost three million dollars, would produce an extra income for Putnam County on tax basis of over twenty-two thousand dollars. So, when this, when this building, when this business completely gets, uh, built out, their tax roll is, is going to tenfold on us, and that's a really good number right there. So, I'm just excited about this and, and look for more opportunities where we can help businesses expand. So, Mister Chairman, I just wanted to bring that out for public knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mister Harvey. Consent agenda consists of item A, list of committee minutes and recommendations distributed to become part of the record. B, list of correspondence distributed to become part of the record. C, administration regional water fund budget amendment resolution, one million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to record revenue and allow for the expenditure of an FDOT grant for the US seventeen water main relocation. D, general services with a list of surplus inventory. E, administration addendum fourteen to consulting services agreement with Joan Edmonds and Associates Incorporated to connect Public Works and Putnam Correction Institution to the East Putnam Regional Wastewater System Phase One, seventy-five thousand dollars. F, appointment of solid waste collection contract evaluation committee. G, administration declare surplus authorized solicitation of sealed bids for two thirty-five Dawn Avenue in El Talarcan. H, administration grant agreement with True Trust Incorporated for Economic Development Grant Funds. I, Public Works change in maintenance classification, non-maintained to maintained for selected roads. J, Public Works FDOT traffic signal maintenance and compensation agreement, seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars reimbursement for operation and maintenance of traffic signals on state roads. Entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval, Mister Chair.
Proper motion second. Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like saying, and none motion carries. Thank you. Item six, Miss Linda Myers, the Honorable Tax Collector, Putnam County, tax certificate sale presentation. Thank you for your patience and good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, Commissioners, Clerk of Courts, Tim Smith, Mister Leary, County Clerk Staff. It's a pleasure to be here. Um, I thought it would be appropriate to come and speak with you when this came out because I'm sure that you have received questions about it, as you do every year, I'm sure of that. Before I start on that presentation though, and I wanna thank the audience for being here as it's real important for your tax office to get this information out. But I wanna take a moment of personal pleasure. Um, I sat through the Drug Court presentation. The first grant was given to us in two thousand one. Nancy Harris, Commissioner Harris, you were a brand-new commissioner and you jumped right in. Brad Purcell was with us and jumped right in, and I believe Herman Summers. That was your first year. Um, it came as a grant for three years, and then the responsibility shifted to the county. And the commission since then have done such an amazing job. If there's anything that talks about a better place, one family at a time, it's the Drug Court. So, I appreciate very much that your, this commission has continued to fund that. It changes lives. And as, um, Judge Morris said, I did not know what the current numbers were, but seven to eight thousand over an eighteen-month period is good use of tax dollars versus the cost of incarcerating. So, um, applause to everybody who's been involved, and I truly enjoyed being part of that as well. But that does take me to the subject today, which is again, tax dollars are serious business and are, our office treats it as that. Um, before I get started, I would like to introduce the two folks that are with me. Um, two reasons. One, it's really nice for us to know these are our neighbors that work for Putnam County and, and specifically your tax collector's office. Rose Wilkinson, please stand, Rose. Uh, Rose is the supervisor of tax administration, and it's important, second, to know who she is. So when you call, you have a specific question, you put a face to that. And then also tax clerk two, Nicole Coward, who is new with us, and I have to say, except we're on TV, but we stole her from Flagler County and we're very pleased to have her. She came with a lot of knowledge in this area. Many of you worked with Patsy Davis, who had been with the tax office for over twenty years. That was a loss of knowledge that Nicole is quickly filling. Thank you. Thank you. I know you're asked about this, and so that prompted us to come here today. We're serious about this, and this is all about delinquent taxes. I have a copy with me, and I also gave it to each of you, of an article that timely enough will be in the Courier-Journal tomorrow. So when you get your Courier-Journal, this article will be in there. This article was a combination of the clerk staff and the tax collector staff together to try to briefly summarize what's the process from when a tax roll is certified to when a tax certificate is sold, which starts in November. So, uh, I know the audience doesn't have these, but, um, do we have extra copies? Uh, anybody who is interested, please raise your hand. We have copies that'll help you follow this. But again, if you have a Courier-Journal coming tomorrow, uh, maybe save it for someone who doesn't or share them. We didn't perhaps bring enough. But the whole process starts in November when the roll is certified and the tax bills go out for the year. And so you'll see, it's kind of a slow month in November. Nothing really happens until April, April first. Taxes that haven't been paid, so currently we're talking about twenty-fourteen taxes that haven't been paid by April first of twenty-fifteen are now delinquent. And then by law, we have to send a notice to let people know because you know what? Sometimes it just slips someone's mind. So by law, we send a notice out that says, are you aware? And sometimes that offends people. We get these phone calls, I already paid it. Well, if you paid it like on March thirty-first, you get caught in that tax file shift. So, um, we have folks that call and say, I paid it, and well, great. Uh, but we are sending this out because we don't want someone to get into the tax certificate process by a simple error. So that is sent out by law in late March or mid, by mid-April. Then in May, we start officially the tax certificate process. So what you'll see in May is we have to list the properties by law. So all of this is covered. This process is quick, is, is defined in state statute. So sixty-seven counties are pretty much following the same, well, they are following the same list of steps. However, they choose a different date sometimes for the tax sale. But this is produced three times by law, three consecutive weeks in the month of May. The third one is slightly different because if you have paid your taxes, that, your delinquent taxes between April and the time we get ready to print the third copy, your name is removed from this list. So I want folks to understand that third one, that third printing, which was last Wednesday, um, was, um, was a slightly smaller. So, in the same time, in the month of May, this certificate sale is done online. So the online bidding opportunities are open. What does that mean? It's not the tax deed sale, but you're able to list yourself as a bidder and find out and look at what properties are on the website. Now, you can look here. It's a lot, it's a lot easier to go online and look. However, that's the purpose of this. A lot of folks don't have computers where they have the opportunity to go online. But anybody can be a bidder. You can, if you don't have a computer, you can use the, the, um, library's computers. And so that's one thing, perhaps next year, we're gonna change. We're gonna do a little bit of a training session there for folks who would like to get more involved. But in May, uh, you, uh, the properties go online and the bidders set up their profiles to bid. Our day of sale is one day. It has been typically been, at, under Ken Mahaffey, typically been the last Friday of May. And in fact, that's what we're doing this year as well. So it is May twenty-ninth, this Friday. So again, this is very appropriate timing as people ask you questions and we see this. This is a big misunderstanding, and that is that what do we bid on? We bid on the interest rate that will be charged to the homeowner or the property owner. So, and it starts at eighteen percent. That is the maximum by law, but bidders bid it down. So it actually is in the, to the advantage of the property owner because it drops significantly and you can go as low as point two-five percent as interest-bearing. You can actually bid zero percent, however, there is no interest on it, of course. And so we don't see that too often. But point two-five percent is the lowest you can get. So if you understand the process, it starts at eighteen percent. And if I'm a bidder and I'm looking and I, um, I can see the properties are getting bids on them and I, um, if I want it real bad, I'll drop my interest rate really low. We have some folks that say, they use it as an investment tool, and they say, you know what? I'm gonna put five percent because five percent's a good in the market right now, and if I don't get it, I don't get it. I have a better use of my money. But if I can get one for five percent, that's where I'm going. So that process all culminates on Friday, May twenty-ninth. And every hour throughout the day, a group of properties close out, such that at the end of the day on, uh, May twenty-ninth, five o'clock, sometimes six o'clock, depending on how many different, um, categories we have, it closes. And the winner who is awarded the bid is the lowest bidder. Now, I often have the question asked, what if there's lots of us at point two-five or lots of us at one? How does that happen? It is a random pulled number that is generated by the, um, tack, by the website that chooses which one of those then would be awarded. And quite often, there are a lot of ties, um, in that case. In fact, we have a lot of ties at the point two-five level. Our corporate, um, our corporate investors often are below one percent. They are anxious to get these properties, uh, get these tax certificates. Now, what is a tax certificate? It is not ownership in property. It is strictly an interest-bearing lien. And you'll see that when you see under May. What does it mean? Well, if the owner, it is strictly, and you'll see that right under tax certificates awarded in the center column. It's a first lien on property that's interest-bearing. Nothing else. It doesn't give ownership. And so that's, that's something that we would really like that information to get out. However, it can lead to a change in ownership, and that's why we treat this seriously. And also, that's why we give that warning somewhere in the middle of the page that says, bidders beware. Please do your research, cause this is serious business. Can the property owner redeem it? Absolutely. They can redeem it. By redeem it, I mean go ahead and pay, pay their delinquent taxes. Absolutely. And if they do that before the bids are awarded, there is no charge for the bids being awarded. It is just the typical tax and interest they owe. If they do it after the bids are awarded, then the winning bidder will receive their interest. But up until and even after, of course, we encourage, uh, the property owners to redeem those properties. The life of a tax certificate. It is seven years. But a tax certificate matures at two years. And here we have two different dates that confuse people. It matures on April first, two years later. So what's maturing this April first for the first time would be, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty-twelve's? So, if a tax certificate was sold in May of twenty-twelve, in twenty-thirteen of twenty-twelve taxes, it actually matured April first of this year. And you'll hear people say two years later. It's not actually two years later. It's one year and ten months. And we really want that information out because people think, oh, I have till May. No, you do not. April first, two years later. So right now, we're talking about those certificates sold in twenty-thirteen. They are mature. What does mature mean? Mature means that the person who has the bid that is mature, who has the certificate that is mature, can then take it to the next step, which can result in a change in property ownership. And so that's why these dates are so incredibly important. So April first, if I'm holding that certificate and have not had, been paid to me, I can call that, say, that property to tax deed sale. If you flip your sheet over, there's a brief description here on what happens in tax deed sale. But as you will know, this is under the purview of the Clerk of Court's office, and I'm not going to deign to discuss this because I am not the resident expert on that subject matter. The other date I want you to remember is, we talked about two dates. They mature on April first, but they go away. There's a statute of limitations ship on a tax certificate, on a lien. There's a statute of limitations on it. It is seven years after the date of purchase. So people get those two confused, and they're significantly different. So are tax certificates guaranteed money? No. Because if you don't act on it, seven years from the date you purchased it. So for example, we're doing this May twenty-ninth, but the ones that are going to statute of limitations out this year, I believe were purchased on May twenty-four. So you have to pay attention to your dates if you're a certificate holder. And in fact, um, it just absolutely goes away. The lien disappears and the property owner has, is not subject to that, that lien. Now, there may be other years out there that they're still subject to, but they are not subject to that lien. So we really wanted to get that information out and also just stand for, um, any specific questions on that. Before I go, we provided in your packet, the brochure we have. Now, we have them on both sides of the dais, and we have copies of this on both sides of the dais. Um, before we leave, we're gonna move them to the back, and if anybody in the audience would like to pick one up and come and talk with us, we'll be outside, the three of us, not to disrupt your meeting. We'll be outside to answer any quick questions we can. And of course, we can invite folks to come down, um, if they're, you know, staying here, come down and talk with us at a later timeframe. In your packet, you also had some information on how many properties are going to sell. What, how many properties are in this packet? Well, this year, there are twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and twelve. I think you have a copy. It looks just like this. You might have one for fourteen as well. We were doing a comparison for you. This is the twenty-fifteen. Interestingly enough, oh, you may not have this one. Have we not? Let me pass this one out. You have the twenty-fifteen? You do. Great. So we have twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and twelve, whereas in twenty-fourteen, that number was lower. I mean, it was higher. It was, well, let me find the right one. It was twenty-two, six hundred and sixty-six. So we've dropped by about seven hundred parcels, which we always think is a good idea. Now, even though we advertised twenty-one, nine, twelve, you will notice the next number were not for sale. And that's for a variety of reasons. We're required to advertise all delinquent taxes, but a number of them cannot have certificates sold on them, and so we have to hold them back. Um, you don't have the current listing of that. I do, in general, eleven hundred and seventy-five are being withheld from sale. And it's a variety of reasons. Two hundred of them are because the parcel's tied up in some sort of litigation. Nine hundred are due to the fact that the, uh, property owner paid the taxes. Um, there's another area called, um, if you're homestead, taxes are less than two hundred and fifty dollars. Those cannot go to tax certificate sale by law. And of course, we have had forty- And of course, we have had 45 have a tax deed application put on them. So that's the data. We have a number of bidders. We have an increase in bidders this year, a significant increase in bidders. We don't know what that'll result in as far as actual items sold. Now, what happens if no one bids? If you go back to that sheet, if no one bids on the property, it sheets to the county. And the county, it is now referred to as a county-held certificate. And because this gets even more complicated, I'd love the opportunity after the sale to come and talk to you about what the sale was all about, how many we sold, what kind of money came from that. And I think it's important to note to you that the money from the delinquent sale will be distributed to you and all the taxing authorities by June 12th. So that money comes in and we immediately get it out to the taxing authorities. Actually, yeah, to the taxing authorities. I'm sorry. Yes. And county-held is a whole nother subject. They are available for purchase. They sit at an 18 percent level, so they're really quite an investment opportunity. We have folks that kind of look at that list, too, and see, they want to do it for investment. It's 18 percent interest. I'd like the opportunity to come after the sale to talk about it, let you know what the proceeds have been, and maybe touch on county-held certificates at that time. Any questions specifically on the tax deed process? If not, I'd like to just mention a couple of other things. You know, I can't be up here to not say a couple of things. And one is, we are really proud, perhaps you heard radio advertisements or saw some newspaper, we worked hard to reach more people about the installment plan, the quarterly payments, because it is a bargain, plus it is easy on pocketbooks of folks in Putnam County. We had a 30 percent increase in people participating in that. Now, that's a good deal. However, the numbers are still very low. So we went from 2,200 folks out of about 99,000 parcels to 2,977, something just under 3,000. We're proud of the increase, but we really still want to get that message out. Now, for those people on that plan, they're already calling, they want to pay, they know it's due in June 30th. I just want to make this announcement, the bills go out today. So, good deal. You should be seeing them tomorrow if you're in the general area, depending on the mail, you know. You never know about that. And finally, the last thing I'd like to talk about, you know, we try to highlight every month a specialty plate to let folks know what's available. You don't just have to drive with that normal Florida plate. You can do something special. In May, June, and July, we always do patriotic plates, either referencing our law enforcement, our firefighters, or our military-serving, or our veterans. So this May, June, and July, we are highlighting all of our military plates. You know, everyone has one, the Coast Guard, the Marines, the Air Force, I'm going to leave somebody out, the Navy, the Army, even the National Guard has one. So 15 or 20 extra dollars on that plate, it's distinctive. And also, that money goes to Army charities, or Air Force, or veterans. So it's a really great opportunity to showcase to our community some other options. With that?
Thank you very kindly, very thorough, and certainly, we pray that all of our citizens will maximize the opportunities and the good customer service that we experience at your office.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner. If you have questions afterwards, these two folks are our resident experts, and they would love to help people get to understand the bidding process. If you noted your page on bidders, we have a significant number, and then we have qualified ones. The difference in those is some people go on it and are just kind of interested to see what it is, but they don't follow through and complete their bidder portfolio. So you'll see a difference in bidders and qualified bidders. But I look forward to either coming in June or early July and letting you know how that went, what the numbers are, and maybe we can talk about the opportunities for county-held.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7, Commissioners, Carr Riggs and Ingram LLC, presentation of the county's independent audit. Page 16 in your packet. Good morning, and thank you.
I'm Tina Robinson with Carr Riggs and Ingram, 906 South State Road 19, and happy to be back with you this morning. As you know, we're here to present the results of the audit for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2014, and I want to summarize those results for you. I believe, I may have mentioned a couple of weeks ago, but I want to say again, to bring to your attention that there were a couple of new governmental accounting standards that were effective this year, and that was GASB 65 and 70, with the primary effect to the county being a reclassification of certain resources to a new item called deferred inflows. So, you know, everybody's probably mostly familiar with the assets, liabilities, and equity, and now there are some new items called deferred inflows, deferred outflows, which, of which you did previously have some of the deferred outflows due to swap agreements. You'll see those two new standards mentioned in your footnotes, 20 and 21, on page 47, if you care to look at that later. Also, next year, I just wanted to bring to your attention that there will be a couple of new standards also effective then. They seem to be ever-changing, the new standards coming in place. This one, I wanted particularly bring to your attention, there'll be a standard related to pensions, of which you're part of the, the county participates in the Florida retirement system. But there will be, for you and other participants in that system, a liability next year that you will record on your financial statements. And your county management is looking at that standard and to see exactly what the effect will be to the county. Then to summarize for this year, I will point you to page 135, which is our summary schedule of findings. This is just a snapshot, basically, of your fiscal year 14 audit results. And you'll see that it says, "Our opinion on your financial statements," which is the very first line, section 1, Roman numeral I, that our auditors' report on your financial statement expresses an unmodified opinion. So this is the clean opinion that you want on your statements. "We believe that they are fairly stated in all material respects." In addition, on this page, we report on your, this is, opinions are on your four major funds, and your major funds this year being the general fund, which is always going to be major, your Better Place Plan Fund, your Waste Management, and your East Putnam Water Fund. So for those four major funds individually, and then the aggregate of all your other funds, you did receive a clean, unmodified opinion. With respect to your internal control over financial reporting, on that, we found no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So you'll see none reported there. We do also look at compliance to see if there are any compliance matters that might be material to your financial statements. The only finding you'll see reported under compliance is with regard to a budget amendment that was not made for the local housing assistance fund. That's on page 136. Now, you did have appropriate funds to expend on that. However, you did not just go through that motion of making the amendment. So that's reported. The other thing that we look at, one of the other major things we look at are the grants of the county. Because you expend a certain amount, you reach the threshold where the federal government requires a, what they call a single audit on the federal funds, and the state has a similar grant process. Because you expend more than that amount, then you have a single audit of your federal monies and your state monies. And we look at those and determine which are the major grant programs. This year, your major federal programs were the water and waste disposal loans and grants, and also your capitalization grant for clean water state revolving funds. On those, we looked at compliance and found no material noncompliance. On the state funds, your major projects this year were wastewater treatment facility construction and your small county road assistance program. You'll see each of those programs listed on page 135. On those, we also tested and found no material noncompliance with regard to the state. One other item I'll mention about budgeting, you were well within your approved budget for the general fund and your major capital project fund. And then, just to kind of summarize about your long-term obligations, you incurred no new long-term debt during fiscal year 14. You paid down your debt as scheduled. You paid it down by 2.2 million. This is, I'll refer you to page 36, which should give you a schedule, basically, of what the county will be paying out on their existing obligations. That table on page 36 is broken down into your governmental activities, and then the debt related to your business-type activities. In the principal column, you'll see the total debt that you're scheduled to pay out, and in which years you have to pay that, along with the interest. You did use short-term financing during the year, which included a state revolving loan, which is already paid off at this point. And you also had a 3.3 million bond anticipation note for bonds that were issued subsequent to 9/30/14, and that's related to your East Putnam wastewater project. After year-end, you also issued an 18.5 million bond anticipation note for short-term financing related to the jail expansion project. And then, during the year, your most significant capital asset expenditures included, as you might guess, related to your financing projects in many cases is where you expend your funds, but this included construction in progress on the East Putnam wastewater system. That was about 5.8 million. You resurfaced widened or paved roads and sidewalks for about 3 million. You did landfill mining for about 1.2 million, and 801,000 construction in progress for the jail expansion. Those are reflected, your total capital assets are reflected in note 8 on page 30, but they're summarized there. It's not going to detail the individual items that you purchased. And then I will go to our reports, which start on page 128. This management letter begins our report, which is required by the Florida State Auditor General. And among other areas that we're required to report on by the state in this letter, the state requires us to apply financial condition procedures as of the end of the fiscal year. And we have to look to see if you meet the definition of the statutory definition of a financial emergency or deteriorating financial condition. And our procedures resulted in our assessment that you do not fall into those categories, which is good news. And so you did not meet the financial emergency definition, nor did we see deteriorating financial condition in the definition by the state. Additionally, based on your 2014 expenditures, and I believe we have noted this... I don't see the paragraph at this point. What we look at is to see if your unassigned general fund balance is sufficient in order to cover your general operating procedures in the coming year. And right now, you have, you are sufficient to cover about two months of general operating expenditures, which is, does meet the minimum recommended by GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. We're also required to comment on whether any prior findings have been corrected, and you did not have any uncorrected prior findings. This management letter also states that your annual financial report, this is at the top of page 129, that will go to the State Department of Financial Services, is in agreement with the audited financial statements that you have before you. And then finally, on page 30, 130, I'm sorry, there's a new report. This used to be part of the management letter that we just discussed, but during this past year, the State Auditor General determined that they would like this to be reported in a separate report, so that it would receive its own opinion. And this is with regard to your investments in accordance with the state statute 218-415. So it just takes the place of a paragraph that we have been reporting on every year. But this report, again, reports that we saw no noncompliance with regard to the investment statute. You are investing in accordance with the allowed investments and your policy. And this really concludes my summary of your financial statements for fiscal year 14. We do appreciate, as always, cooperation of your staff and your management, and I'll be glad to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very kindly. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Harvey?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Tina, thank you very much for a great presentation. I've read this budget over and over. I really enjoyed the audit report. On page 42, though...
We never hear that.
Yeah, I liked it. I've got all kinds of notes, but I'm only going to ask you about one. Mr. Jones is helping this morning quite a bit. It seems like, according to chapter 129 of Florida state statutes, that we kind of got in a little trouble by not doing a budget amendments. Is that correct on some of those funds that had deficits in them?
Well, the finding that's in the report now, is that in particular one that you're talking about?
Right.
First of all? Okay. On that one, in order to expend the funds, yes, you should amend the budget. The statute requires an approved budget in order to expend funds. So you had the funds, and that budget amendment just didn't occur.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's the only question I have, sir.
Any additional questions? Thank you for your presentation, commissioners. If there are no questions, then the proper action is to approve the annual independent audit.
I move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Proper motion and second. Any further discussion? I think that our clerk's office, specifically, Mr. Jones, thank you so much for your role and responsibility in making sure that t's across and i's are dotted, and also Mike Anderson, our administrator, it says a lot about, again, the magnitude of all that has to happen there, and then the quality of the in-depth review that, I mean, obviously, it's required by law, but you still have to know what you're doing. You know, that kind of thing. And so, we are certainly appreciative for that. If there's no further discussion, we do have a proper motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Not aye? Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Item 8, patiently waiting on us has been Mary Garcia and John Holmes, Department of Health, resolution amending environmental health fees, commencing on page 61 in the packet. Thank you very kindly.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
Before you, when I came on board, and two years ago, we've been taking a look at some of our fees to make sure that we're sustainable. Our environmental health fees, we have been under review, have been the same since the program became, came online originally in 1997 without an increase, except for a minor increase in 2008 for septic. We really want to make sure that we're offering the best services that we can for our environmental services. Some of the laws have changed, making our work a little bit more difficult, so the time it takes is a little bit longer in that the fee structure has, takes that, reflects that as well. We've also taken a look at counties surrounding us, particularly rural counties and their fee structure, to see if we're comparable. We're below those. We're trying to make sure that we stay below those, and certainly, are more wealthier countries. And certainly, our more wealthier counties around us, we're way below them. But we wanted to be able to put in place a fee structure that we could sustain bringing on an additional environmental specialist onboard, so to increase our customer service in Putnam County.
Okay, Mr. Holmes? You got anything to add, or you just amen what she's saying? Okay, if you could, as you go to the various components of the recommended revisions, help me understand, starting with, with water, wherein there's been a state fee, and then the county fee, are we saying that is a new fee, pretty much as it relates to the county? Elaborate on, on each of those there, where it says first year, second year, and multi-family water. Help us to understand.
Yeah, that's all, that's the way it's set up. In the first year, whenever we permit a public use well, there's an operating permit included, and there's a, a construction permit included, and the fee structure is what it says in the first year. The second year and thereafter, it's just a flat fee every year.
Okay, so why was there no county fee in times past?
There never, never has been. This is, this is something that we're proposing. Some of our fees and some of our permits, we've, we've had county fees for, since two thousand and eight, and we're just trying to expand that a little bit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Do, do the county fees go into our general fund, or do they stay with the Health Department for operations?
They stay with, with the Health Department.
They stay with the Health Department.
Okay.
Okay. Over where it says bacteria water sample bottle, help me understand what the dollar's going to do.
I can tell you that.
Okay.
It's the, the jar, we've been, usually give them out for free, but we're finding that they don't return back to us when they'd have a water sample tested. So if we charge a, we're going to charge a dollar for the bottle itself, if you come pick up bottles, if you come back, then that is included in the price of your water testing, which we encourage water testing. Yes, sir.
Mr. Lible.
If that bottle is not returned, isn't it true that they've got trouble on the horizon?
We do encourage people to test. This is actually one of our environmental health initiatives in the Department of Health to make sure that people are testing their well water. Yes, that really should be tested at least once a year.
Then they would be subsequently fined, wouldn't they, Ms. Garcia?
You don't have to test, I mean, usually when you come through every fee, but testing your water is something that you want to do, there's specific instructions on making sure that your water is tested, but no, there is no fine requiring you to test it, it's just a really good standard of what you want to do, is to test your water at least once a year, and we're recommending that right now.
We're talking residential, though, right now, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
Not commercial.
Yes, yes, residential.
Commercial's a different structure, what would that be?
The bottles themselves, what happens is we, we buy so many bottles every year, about twelve...
Speak to Mike, please, Mr. Holmes.
Pull that, pull her out there.
Real close, you've got a soft voice, Mr. Holmes.
Yeah.
What happens is we buy, you know, twelve hundred to fifteen hundred bottles every, every year, and they're used for all the programs. Sometimes, and we find it out more frequently, people are coming in, and they're taking our bottles, and then they're, they're using them in other labs, and, you know, we, we never see the, the use, you know, go to our lab. So what we're trying to do is, is just the people who do use our facilities and our, to make sure that...
You at least want to get cost back out of the bottle, basically.
Exactly, that's, that's all.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Garcia?
I'm, thank you. Is that, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lible.
Up to page, I guess it's sixty-six, and all that in red, is that something that we're implementing that has never been there before, did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
And then after that, are increases of different...
Some of it's increases, some of it's, some of it's new implementation. I didn't separate the, the existing fees with, with new fees. I just, I just took all the ones that were related to the county and made those all all in red, anything that I was changing or implementing.
So how do we go from not having any fee at all on the county level to, I guess, across, not across the board, but in so many different classifications here? How have we gone so long? And again, I know that cost of doing businesses was motivating you here now, but it just seems awfully strange that the classifications and the categories were there, but it was no fee.
It was time, sir, that's why we have taken the last two years since I've came on, come on board, really taking a look at our fee structure, taking a look at our cost of doing business, and the time it takes for each of those, either individual inspections to be done, and then taking a look at the fee structures that other counties have surrounding us as well. And so we took all of those into, into consideration. And then consideration that this would probably bring us about, well, they look like a lot of fees, it probably adds up to about fifty thousand dollars, which would allow us to start to bring another inspector onboard.
Okay, so how has this been subsidized? Have you been cutting services, what, what has happened?
They've been subsidized by, by fees that have come from our clinic fees, so we've been subsidizing the environmental health program. We'd like for them to at least try to sustain themselves. We will still subsidize the program, but we would like to bring on an additional engineer.
Okay. Over on page sixty-six, where it talks about after the fact well permit fee, and then it says, before it had five hundred dollars, this says double permit fee. How do you explain what that means to the...
That's actually a reduction, sir, so that everybody that may have been delinquent or, or was late, there was a, a flat fee charged this way, it's only double their actual permit. So if the permit would be a hundred dollars, it would only be two hundred dollars rather than the five hundred dollars. So that's actually a reduction in cost. We also wanted to be fair in looking at those fees as well, to make sure we reduce them appropriately.
So how do you, how do you get to that? Okay, after the fact well permit fee, where is the fact well permit fee listed? Is that the one that's on page sixty-five? What, I mean, does it apply to which items?
It applies to the construction of the wells.
Which is where?
You look at the page, prior page on well permits?
Uh-huh.
It shows that there's a fee for an irrigation well, there's a fee for a private well permit, there's a fee for a, a public well permit, and for instance, if you had a private well permit and you had it put in without a, without a permit, we would double that fee, which would make the hundred, make it a two hundred. If it was a public use well, the original fee, the permit fee's a hundred and fifty, so it would be a three hundred dollar penalty.
Okay, go to number three on page sixty-five, where it says public well permit, DEP. You got two different county fees, but nothing for the state there. Can you explain that?
The, the, we are a delegated county from DEP, and we are authorized through the Water Management District for the construction of the wells less than six inches, and we didn't, didn't have an actual state fee established, so we've been calling that a county fee all these years.
Okay, so, but you got one county fee, say one fifty, and then you got another county fee, say fifty. What's the difference between the two fees, or is it really just a two hundred dollar fee?
The, the, the original, the original county fee was, was one fifty, and we're, we're recommending that we add fifty dollars to it.
That's just, that could have been that clear.
Okay, so I guess if it's following the other process, the one fifty would be a strike-through, and two hundred would be...
Right, it should have been a strike-through.
Okay, so it should have been a strike-through, and then underneath that should be two hundred, where it says county fee, correct?
Right, right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're on point on that. Okay, commissioners, are there any other areas of concern, or you have, I think it's pretty much consistent through, on the annual operating permit fee for systems in IM, where IM is mentioned, as I continue to read, I understand IM is industrial manufacturing, is that right?
Industrial manufacturing and, and commercial.
Okay. Again, on number twelve, they had just had IM, and then I had to kind of get back to page seventy to find out what on guard green acres IM meant, so...
I don't know which one that was.
Okay, you might would want to just...
Clear that up.
Yeah, clear that up, and item on number twelve on page sixty-eight.
Okay.
On page seventy, do you get down to late fee? If you can explain that.
I don't, I don't have...
Number five there?
Of course.
What area is under... Bottom of page seventy?
Our number is different than yours.
Oh, it is? I'm sorry. Miscellaneous, it's, it's, it's right before food service at the very end of...
Miscellaneous, okay.
This is in the septic tank section.
Yeah, the, the late fee for industrial manufacturing and commercial systems, and, and there's some other permits, or these are annual operating permits, again renewed every year, and we're, we're recommending, or suggesting that we, we double that fee from before.
Okay, I was just looking at...
Strike twenty-five, now it's, now it's, we'll go to fifty, for, for a total of fifty.
Okay, so this is treatment system operating permits, and that's basically, the late fee is related to those treatment system operation permits. Okay? I think that's pretty much all I had marked up, I marked up quite a bit. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that this department is not well-understood in the county, that it's actually a partnership, it's, it's called the Putnam County Health Department, but the majority of the funds are run by contributions from the state.
Correct.
And we contribute to that each year out of our general fund, and then these fees are operating costs that they need to keep everything going. So with that, I make a motion that we approve the changes to the fees as presented.
Okay.
I still have some questions.
Okay, we have a, a motion, and then we have some questions, so...
I'm sorry. Well, you can have a second and then answer questions.
Yeah, we could, and I was waiting on it, but I didn't get it yet.
I'm sorry.
So that's for lack of a second for right now, I'm sure. Stay tuned. Yes, sir. Mr. Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to bring to your attention the resolution that you will need to contemplate to put these fees into effect, to actually put these fees into effect on June the first.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you so much. Mr. Lible.
On item twenty, on page sixty-nine, you've got portable and temporary toilet service permits, and I want to know if that's a total increase to these operators, or is that per unit?
It's, it's for the, for the actual operator, that's his, his operating permit, it's just one permit that we're increasing the fee on.
So it'll add fifty dollars, and that's it? Not per toilet?
No, not per toilet. That's a lot of money. We'd be making some money on that, right?
Okay, Mr. Harvey.
Ms. Garcia, thank you for coming. You said that these new fees will hope to generate fifty thousand dollars, which would help hire a new person, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't know what you pay, but how much has this, how much has your department been subsidizing over there now, a year?
About between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars to the program. We did have to do a layoff a couple years ago, and I'd like to restore that. We're having, the economy is restoring itself as well, and so it means a, a little bit more business for us as well. So this would be a partial. Hopefully, the increase in some of the services would make up the difference for the salary. If not, I will be making it up.
Okay, so let me get that clear, clarified. You're currently doing fifty to a hundred thousand a year subsidizing as of now. These current fees will only generate fifty thousand, which is still going to leave you subsidizing...
Fifty thousand.
Quite a bit of money. So, and my other question is, are y'all that busy that you need to hire another person right now? I mean, is Putnam County, you see our, our permits going up on septic tanks and wells and things of that nature?
We have seen an increase right now, and I think that we've been also running our engineers at a pretty good clip, so that if anybody, God forbid, got sick, it would cause a, I do not want to enter into that customer service event. You'd also need to plan for some succession planning as well. So for me, it's just a really good business, and I try to run this as a business. We try to make sure that we are as fair as we can to everyone involved, especially our clients and our citizens, because we are part of it as well. So there are those fees that I would be paying myself, so I want to make sure we take that into effect, and, and so, yes, that's a very good point.
I have a quick, my last question is, do we currently, I don't know if, I guess we might have to move forward today, but I would rather see us, how much these are increasing per one? Some are new fees, some are increased, and your diagram here doesn't really delineate that. How could we see what's an increase and what's a new?
Oh, the increases with the, each, we try to separate them out for each of you, so everything in red would be either an increase, the new fees would be where there would not have been anything else listed, and it's, we try to make it, put them in red to delineate those changes for you, to make them pop. Did I understand that correctly? Is that, okay, thank you.
I just have always been told, since I've been here, that the Health Department was the state of Florida, and it's kind of hands-off, but it's going to assume to me, like today, we're fixing to raise fees and taxes on our citizens, so it's really not hands-off at all.
It, it is allowable, sir, and it does allow, and it occurs in many counties where we've been, and it is at the pleasure of, certainly of the Board of County Commissioners. This is something that we are exploring at the state level, but it takes a lot longer to, to go into effect, because it does affect sixty-seven counties across the state. And if they do make a change, I will assure you that I will be back here to have those approved fees that you have approved removed, if they make those changes. I do promise you that.
Mr. Lible.
My question's on the same line, Ms. Garcia and Mr. Holmes. It's almost like you receive an unfounded mandate from the state at the county level, like we do often after a legislative session, but what, what, is there any language or conversations at the state level that, that we might get additional compensation to provide these services for public safety, because that's what it all is?
There, there is actually a work group right now of county health officers. We have been meeting now for the last year, and have come up with a proposal. We actually took a look at every county, at the time that each of the services it takes to run, and then the difference, basically, on the fee structure versus the time it takes to provide those services, and it doesn't include getting to and back and forth to those, to the actual site of the inspection, but that is included, and that is now being under review at the Department of Health level, through our environmental program at the Bureau level, and then hopefully that will go to the legislature.
Okay, with that being said, any conversation for the RACIC counties, rural counties of economic concern?
I remind them of that daily, sir, yes, sir, that I have submitted certainly the, the information on the RACIC counties, but they, when they make a decision, that will be made for all sixty-seven counties.
Please represent us well there.
Thank you.
Now, any, these increases are not welcome.
I know, we try to keep them as minor as possible, because they do affect each of us. They, the difference is that we have not done any increases since the program began in ninety-seven, and had we taken them upon ourselves slowly, it might be less painful, but I thought it was just best to go ahead and address them at one time, be realistic. And then again, if the state does change the state fee structure, then we will be back to request that you remove them.
Mr. Garcia.
Two questions, Mary. What is a Sharps container?
There are the containers that you put needles in, and so there are a lot of individuals that do, do insulin and need containers to do it, rather than putting them in milk jugs, whatever, something might be less safe, so that we can do the proper disposal of them.
Next question. How many counties of, of the six surrounding us have already implemented fees like this?
Every one of them, sir.
Every one of them.
Ms. Harris?
Okay. I was just going to say, we had to raise our fees to a degree, I think it was last year, and we wanted to be sure that we weren't charging more than any of the surrounding counties, and we had our planning department check what the other counties were doing to make sure we were at the same level or less. And Mary Garcia explained to us that that's exactly what she did. She checked to see if our fees were at the same level or less with any of the other counties. So I think they've been very careful, you know, with what they've had to do.
So what, what incentive remains for the, for the state to, to do what they need to do if we're going in and making it easy for them to, for the department to be subsidized? We're certainly not interested in adversely affecting the abilities of the department to be sustainable, but at the same time, if all of the counties have been proactive and raised the rates to compensate or counterbalance what's happening?
That, that's a very good question, and that is why we... That's a very good question. And that is why we are doing this workforce. I think that it's time, that it is the responsibility of the state to take a look at those fees. Every county right now has the fee structure for environmental health is across the board. They can be as high as multiple times higher than we are, depending on the county and depending on the, the level of funding that the county provides, either that county or the structure of the county. So it's, right now, it's very driven by each county's fee structure. So, but that is, that, this is why we have pledged to join together and have put a workforce together to present that as well to our Environmental Health Bureau, our Surgeon General, and then have that taken up to be addressed.
What is the estimate on the, of the timing of that?
Well, sir, this is the first time that it has been done really as a whole board and the health officer's involvement. So, but I, the wheels have worked slowly. So by the time it gets, right now, it's in the Bureau right now. I know it's being reviewed by our Deputy Chief as well to be presented to the, hopefully to the Surgeon General before the end of our fiscal year.
Mr. Libley.
Just one more thing to add. When you reconvene with your committee, that I would like to have expressed through you. Any, the RACIC counties that are experiencing a stagnant population increase, the rest of the state, you know, they're going to these economic corridors that the governor's created. And by and large, this, the greater percentage of these services are needed by that new business. We're not having that in the rural counties. I mean, can you express, it should be, the population equation should come in to their decision as far as funding and, and what they give us. I mean, we have the same population doing the same thing. And tax base is a meme at best. And it's.
I think the legislator, legislative level does, when they do reductions in funding to the health department, they do try to hold rural counties harmless, so to the reductions. Putnam County, though, because of the census, has fallen outside. We are no longer considered a rural county unless you take RACIC into effect. And so that, I, after our conversation, gosh, several years ago, when we talked about RACIC counties here in this, in this room, I took that up to them to say, just because we are no longer census-wise considered a rural county, needless to say, Putnam is. And we are considered by certainly the governors and governors before ours as an area of economic concern. And that, for them to hold any, any cuts that the legislature makes to the health department in particular harmless. So we're, we're fighting that as well. Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Harvey?
Yes, one final statement, if you don't mind. And I have to agree with the chair from what I was hearing. If we're making it easy for the state of Florida not to come down here and do, raise their rates, there's no incentive there. And so we're going to, we're going to tax our citizens today and give them more fees. And the state's not going to come down, in my opinion, and do anything differently than what they're doing. Everything's been thrown back on us. So for that, I'm just not interested in, and I apologize.
That's okay.
Commissioners, this does require the passing of a resolution that has been prepared in draft form. Putnam County Resolution Number Twenty-Fifteen dash forty-four, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Amending the Adopted Fee Schedule for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Fourteen, Two Thousand Fifteen. This ordinance, the resolution establishes, the resolution establishes the user fees for the activities that have been presented. And it would, it would cancel and supersede Exhibit C, Environmental Health Fees Section adopted in Resolution Twenty-Fourteen dash Fifty-Nine on September twenty-third, Two Thousand Fourteen. And revised fees and charges in Exhibit C pertaining to charges for the environmental health fees would actually become effective on June first, Two Thousand Fifteen. Someone prepared to move the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move the resolution. And I want to tell you that you'll work hard if you want to find someone that works harder for us, that runs our health department, always going to Tallahassee, always looking out for interest, for our interest. And a step ahead of us, most every question you've given, she is already addressing and working on those committees. These figures are not anything, you know, it's mostly fifty dollars and a hundred dollars. And it's to keep the department running well. And the position that she needs to fill is not something that anyone off the street could fill. It's an engineer in that department. If something happened to one, she would have a hard time running that department. And I, I agree with what has been presented. And again, I make the motion that we adopt that resolution.
Proper motion on the floor.
Second.
Second. Further discussion. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
No.
District five?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, John.
Okay, we're going to take item nine. Tim Ho, Tim Howting. Larry Gass, there are some questions, solid waste planning questions and, and responses that have been presented. You all have had an opportunity to discuss it. Tim, you can come forward and let us know of any other, any follow-up concerns. Both of you all can come together and fill us in. We don't have to go through all of the details. Are there any discrepancies or anything that is not making sense?
I put in the list of questions like almost a month ago, and I got the answer on Friday. And I sent back some more questions and, and so yes and no is the answer.
Okay, so he had, he has not had opportunity to deal with the additional questions?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank the lady up front. She was kind enough to bring it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we have that.
We do.
Yeah, we got it. First age, anyway. I'll just, some more questions I threw in there afterwards.
At the end?
Just because, huh?
Are they at the end?
No, you can't see it on, on your copy. But Mr. Gass answers or follow my questions. And then after his answer, I threw in some more. The whole purpose of this exercise, allow me first. Ms. Harris asked me one time, who the heck am I? So I thought I probably should let you know.
I didn't say the heck.
Well, my vernacular. Don't forget the quotes, okay? I did.
Pull your microphone up.
I did cops and robbers for thirty years. And I came down here just about the time there was, I opened a copier and there's this big picture of a Mount Trashmore. And I said, oh, my gosh. So I thought I'd come down here and see what you all do. I have a house. I've been blessed. It's a nice house, which means you all spend the largest amount of my paycheck every month, other than the mortgage person that I'm trying very hard to fire. Okay, I'm sort of like a Dave Ramsey type guy. And I'd love to see you all in that sort of attitude. So I thought, that's why I've sort of hung out, because there's a lot of coming and going. I've had one of Herman Cain's big, big deals, if you see it, is are you asking the right questions? And with all due respect, y'all are having to, over the last two years, put up with all kinds of stuff on this landfill. And I'm not certain you're asking the right questions. And I probably should have got it, just, just in case, Mr. Flag, but no. Florida's got, there are other things other than plasma gas. Your, your committee has worked and worked and worked, the two committees. There was one gentleman there that forever would say, we need to discuss business plans, business models. And that went nowhere on those committees. I think if the committees can't discuss those things, you all should discuss those things, which is the reason that I threw these questions in. Now's the time, I guess probably past the time, because you already made your decisions, what you want when you did the RFPs. But now's the time when your pickup services are coming up for contract, for you all to look at the business plans and how you're doing your garbage, how everybody else is doing it. These questions are, are hopefully just thought provokers for y'all. Is what I have to say. Doesn't mean deadly. But I, I think it'd be in your best interest if you take a look at them. All of the time that, you know, Mr. Gass lives in a different world. He lives in cubic foot of waste world. I live in a little bag of garbage world. I live in a recycle world. And I think you need to help him, ask him some questions. It'll end up with some translation that'll get down in our little world. And you're not supposed to ask the question if you don't know the answer. But I've been pestering people from where I came at in Central Lake, South Carolina, that they have an entirely different business plan that would go into the vision of what Ms. Harris argues so strongly for is those waste transfer stations. They have them set up so that the citizens who choose not to pay taxes, or a lot of taxes, because it's ten dollars a month or some silly thing, that I paid for a really beautiful dump out there with really beautiful recycling operations and really beautiful everything else. And their waste transfer services, I just went out and I dropped stuff in the bin and recycled once a week, every other week, depending on how much. People have made a lot of stuff, paid private contractors to come out, run their, run their trucks down the road and take it away. My vision is that they always ended up with a lot more trash. So they deserve to pay. Out in, out in Oregon, they pay by the, by the bag. And I've heard Mr. Gass go through it. And I shouldn't have gone through that tangent, because I forgot where I was headed. The transfer stations work. They're a different business model.
Let me just.
And, yes, ma'am.
Transfer station, you don't mean like where we hold it and then ship our garbage to another state?
No, ma'am.
You're talking about our one on the south end and the west end?
Yes, ma'am. They have, they have these little, some of them bigger than little, where you drive through. And they'd have trash compacters and, and the big cans set out. You throw your garbage in, it squishes it. Big trucks come up and haul these things out. And they go to the, the regular landfill.
Convenience centers, I think, is what we've been calling.
Convenience centers, sorry.
It's okay. I just wanted to be sure which one.
And alongside, they have different, for people that, like myself, that want to get off their duff and separate out the steel and the aluminum cans and all of that. A lot of it was, they had some sort of an arrangement. So the county seemed to got bypassed. The, for a while, they were reprocessing flower plant pots, which could go to your, your fern growers. And those are the individuals that went out and actually picked the things up. It's just a trailer, not a big deal. But it's there. I asked Mr. Gass for some economics, just as all of your committees have asked for. And I think if you take a look at the answers, you might want to ask some more questions. And I'm sorry for getting up here for this. Okay, I got on a roll. I didn't know where I was going. Back to my question. Finally, the Lexington County landfill guy, he doesn't want to talk a lot. But Mr. Gass actually got to talk to him. And we may have more for you that, that if you'd actually explore the business models before you issue your RFPs, before you issue your seven-year contracts. What I gave Mr. Flag was the fact that the state of Florida leads the nation in alternative technology for handling trash. Most of them, there's one that's the equivalent of what you all got, takes a grand total of twenty-two acres. They've had a waste-to-energy burner going, and he's nodding his head, he knows all of this, for twelve years. It's an economic model. It works. It's out there. It would resolve some of the issues you guys have had to suffer through. Just, it's like you all got blinders on. Oh, my gosh, we're either going to have gasification or we're going to have a, you know, a Mount Trashmore. And I understand EPA rules and all of that forced you into that position. I'm not trying to be, be nasty. But there are alternatives that you all could do. And if you want to go for energy, then you have, in my estimation, let's go there. But let's consider, just tried and true stuff that had, that had addressed some of your, your challenges that, in, in my humble estimation, the really hard-working committees didn't have an opportunity to pursue. So, and I'll go talk to Larry about what happened in Lexington County. Thank you.
Okay.
Unless, do you have any questions?
I, I wanted to say that I want to thank Tim for, for turning me on. He contacted one of the legislators in the county and the county administrator, gave me a call. They're in a little bit of a different situation than what we are. The county has non-mandatory collection. But the county has a very limited population. Most of the population are located within the municipalities.
Very rural like ours.
And the municipalities do have mandatory collection. But the county doesn't. And the county's kind of in a, in a situation like we are too, where they've got, I think he said they had seven convenience centers. And, but he said they want to try to do everything they can to call them not convenient centers because they're not convenient for the county. I'm going to continue some contacts with him. They're approximately the same size as we are as far as landmass. But I believe he said they had like two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand residents, of which the majority of which live within the municipalities within the county. The county does not have mandatory collection. As I said, they rely totally on the service centers for the citizens of the county to go through, where most of the city residents do have the collection. I'm hoping to get back with him. And like I said, I appreciate Tim putting me on to, to these people to see what that dynamic is that they have going between the cities and the counties, where the count, the cities are picking up a good portion of that cost and alleviating it from the county. So I wanted to let you know that I've been.
Appreciate that. The one thought that I forgot, going back to Ms. Harris's complaints the last couple of times and your complaints about the apartment buildings, cleanouts and all of that kind of stuff. I saw in, yes, Palatka paper, there's going to be that continuing fight over who's going to pay for garbage on the government housing that's in the city of Palatka, which is, you know, been going along, on it as long as I'm here. They're fighting to have basically the same concept of having a fee per apartment that Ms. Harris was told is impossible. You know, while you're reviewing your business plan, is there no reason that the county can't get into competition for some of that business? Is there no reason that you can't put a fee per apartment? Is there no reason that, that, that transfer of economic cost isn't spread out to those that, that derive? isn't spread out to those that derive that? Or review whatever you require the commercial outfits to do? It just seems totally illogical to me to have a little small two man office that creates less garbage than I do that has to pay on a commercial. And why can't the county just absorb that and make some more money? Just consider the business plans, I'm sorry. No questions?
Thank you very kindly. I don't have any at this point, but again, it's just good to know that we are not looking at just one technology, that there are multiple proven technologies that are out there. And although we're accused of not listening, you'll find out that we are. Thanks again. We're going to take a five minute recess and then we'll have our, our public hearing for planning and development. Um, for a public hearing or as close to that and as close as we can get to that is 11:21 a.m. This morning, we do have Mike Brown, our planning manager that's here, talk about case number CA 15-001, amendment to Article 12 of the Land Development Code related to subdivision classification. Good morning and almost good afternoon.
Good morning. Again, Mike Brown, Putnam County Planning and Development Services. This is the first reading of an amendment to, a proposed amendment to the county land development code. To, well. To add a, a new category of subdivision to the land development code. This would be a type three or we're also calling in the house so far family subdivision. What this new subdivision requirement would do would allow families who've owned agricultural land for a number of years to, and wanted to pass on homestead to their children or homesites to their children or other family members, let me say that, it would be defined immediate family members. And I don't know if we can get this to work well. Without the requirements of the, without the infrastructure requirements associated with the type one subdivision. Just a little brief history. If you split your land more than three times in the state of Florida, it's a subdivision. In Putnam County, we have a type one subdivision, which requires a lot of infrastructure primarily related to paved roads and drainage. It has been brought up to the staff that that becomes burdensome, especially for families that have owned ag land for a number of years, they want to pass a home site on to an immediate family member. And they still want to maintain the agriculture use of the land. That, that infrastructure requirement becomes very costly. So staff has proposed a, like I said, a type three, what we're calling type three subdivision. And it would pertain, the requirements to participate in the process, you'd have, it would have to be property that's that has land use of ag one or ag two and is also zoned agriculture on the county zoning map. You'd have, the family, family would have to own the land for a minimum of 10 years. They would have, there would have to be an agreement tie associated, and that's the big piece of this. Is that it would require an agreement between the new property owners, those that are obtaining the lot for a home site and the county. This agreement would be recorded and so it would go with the property. And the purpose of the agreement would be that because we're not requiring the infrastructure to be put in place. They would come, that. Let me, give me a second there, get my thoughts back together. When, because we're not requiring that infrastructure to be in place, the agreement would stipulate that at no time would the county be responsible for providing the infrastructure, new roads, et cetera, to those parcels. We didn't want those to come back to you and say, well, I've been living on this paved road. We've created this family, family subdivision, we've created this dirt road. I want you to come back, county to come back in and take maintenance or, or control of that road. Another infrastructure, so that the county would not be, the owner of the property would understand and recognize that the county would not be responsible at any time in the future of maintaining access to those parcels. It also requires the property owners to maintain adequate access so that emergency vehicles could get to those parcels. Thus, thus by also protecting the, the county from maintenance on their emergency vehicles. When we went to the original proposal to the planning commission, we included a requirement as part of that agreement that if any of those lots that were created was ever sold to a non, or transferred to a non-family member, then the whole, the whole subdivision would have to meet the type one subdivisions, which would mean the paved infrastructure, paved roads and drainage. That is what the planning commission heard, there was a, and actually it sent a recommendation to you for approval. At the planning commission, there was an extensive discussion about that requirement. A lot of concern was raised on that. Subsequent to that, we've also, staff has also received comments and solicited some additional discussion from outside, primarily people that deal with mortgage and title company insurance. And the issues associated with that transfer and basically penalizing those members in that subdivision that did the right thing if one party decided to sell their parcel to a non-family member. We believe that those, we've taken that impact or in information in. And I've provided two in your packet. An item A, which is what, exhibit A is what the planning commission actually approved. Exhibit B is an alternative based on the comments and discussions at the planning commission and what we've taken in. And so is an alternative for consideration coming from staff to the board. What alternative B would be, would be to take that paragraph out that says if you sold a parcel to a non-family member, the entire subdivision would turn into a type one subdivision. We'd take that out and in its place, we would put in a condition that says an individual could only obtain a homestead parcel through this process one time in their life. I mean, if you're getting a homestead, you wouldn't want to do that multiple times anyway. All along, one of the concerns staff had with this process would be somebody or a group of people trying to utilize this process to bypass the infrastructure requirements of the type one subdivision. If a family member received a parcel through this, got a homestead, they would, that would be fine, they can do it one time. If they passed it on to a non-family member in the future, they could not come in and say, well, I want to obtain another parcel for a homestead in the future. That's staff's alternative to taking out the requirement where the whole subdivision turns into a type one subdivision.
Mr. Chairman.
Again, this is the first, the first reading, so we'll come back with some final wording for you for the second wording. If, if that's the direction that the board would like to.
Are you able to specify where in exhibit A and where in exhibit B the change is? Because I think we all are familiar with exhibit A.
Particularly the planning commission comments.
Right, right.
That's what's been added since we had our workshop.
Right.
Yeah. On exhibit.
It's titled before, isn't it?
A. It is on page 83 of your agenda packet. It would be item F4. Is the wording that, that stands now or as recommended by the planning commission. In the event a lot created pursuant to family subdivision is sold to an individual or party that is not member of the immediate family is defined in D3 above, the entire subdivision will revert to requirements of a type one subdivision set forth in Article 12084. That would be removed. And if you, on page 99 of your agenda packet. You will see that, that under, it now becomes G. G, that's not included, but if you look above in, above there in E, paragraph E above on page 99, says any, any individual, an individual is eligible to receive a parcel through a type three family subdivision one time only. So that, that is the difference that, between A and B and, and staff believes it. It makes it easier for everybody, makes it more workable. We've heard from title companies and mortgage, mortgage people that having that requirement made it, would have made it real difficult for them to want to lend money for homestead. And so it really would be impractical and probably would have caused us to come back here in the future to make that change because I don't think a lot of families could have, could have utilized the process. So we think that this would be a better approach.
So, we actually, that was my question, where can I find this verbiage? But, so we would be scratching out number F4, totally.
Right.
And we would just insert this.
Yeah, we would add, yeah, yeah, add that it would only, right, you can only, you can only receive a homestead once through the process.
That clause, I have all kinds of notes of things that could happen that would cause it to get out of a family member's name. For instance, if you had a mortgage and it got foreclosed on, they, they lost their job and they lost their home. And then the bank took it back and then it sold again. That puts everybody in an extreme hardship of paving the roads and putting in, I'm so glad, that one was bothering me the most. And it's reasonable that they could only get one. Okay, I'm, I'm real pleased that you came up with the solution.
Counsel, you had something?
I was just going to say that the thing Ms. Harris was referring to is needing to be inserted, is inserted on the alternative.
Yeah.
The subs, the replacement for what was struck is in the replacement.
Yes, yes, it's just not in the same location.
Correct.
Yes, it's in the replacement and it's, it's actually in, in the replacement, it would be in paragraph E. Not in, not, so it's not in exactly the same place as what we're removing.
Right. And actually, without us talking about it, you'd never figure out what that was there for. I mean, I mean, we know why we did it, but it doesn't really explain. But I guess as long as it does it.
And again, this is only the first reading, so we'll bring back a, if, if this is the direction the board desires to go, we'll bring back the final wording for the second reading.
Mr. Chairman, could I just bring up one more thing on that page? I think that we should remove in number, let's see, number C at the top of page 83. We have the second line mentions owner's immediate family and it says adoptive parent. I don't know, I don't think that's correct. You have adopted children, but I don't think that's a real family member.
Yeah, that's somebody you found inside the road and you just.
That may be an out for them for selling it twice. Well, this is my adoptive parents. But anyway, I think we need to strike that unless you have a better definition.
Brian has something on his mind that calls him to step forward.
Just to add to what Mike said, again, we came to the conclusion that we were actually potentially causing more problems than we were creating. We were after creating or after fixing a specific problem and actually I think with the previous language would have actually created more problems for the public than we were solving. Specifically with the issue of mortgage underwriting and title issues. So I think this will help the situation. And again, this is the first hearing of two. So if the board is inclined to go along with our alternative, please just direct us and then the second hearing, all you will get is the alternative and not the previous version.
Thank you. So basically, we're not marking up exhibit A, we're looking at the alternative exhibit B that has the clean language in it.
Yes, that's.
If, if the board is.
If the board desires to go that way, yes.
Based on that. This is a public hearing, so I think it would be a good time now for us to open the public hearing and to, to hear from individuals who are, may or may not be affected today or may be affected further down the road as it relates to the recommendation that's coming before us relating to subdivision classification. Are there any citizens here for this particular issue?
Yes, Ms. Harris, what section were you just talking about in the definition of immediate family?
It's page 83, item C, and it's the second line.
12.08.06 requirements for type three subdivisions where it says family subdivision subsection C.
And it says of the owner's immediate family and in parentheses it says parent, stepparent, adoptive parent.
That is a proper term.
It is?
Adoptive parent is the parent, the person who adopts a child of somebody else's parents.
Well, we do say child, adopted child, does that?
Well, but the child could give it to his adoptive parent. The adopted child under this section could deed the property to that child's adoptive parent. We're thinking in the context of the older person always owning the property, but that's not necessarily true.
Oh, okay.
That would take it out of the, a family type unit then, wouldn't it?
Okay.
No, if it's in there, well.
Adopted child owns the property, he could deed the property to his, the person who adopted him. And they would qualify as a member of his immediate family and therefore could take advantage of the family subdivision rules.
Okay. I just couldn't understand that. Okay, fine, thank you.
Close to public hearing, commissioner, discussion deliberations.
One question, Mike. If there were a problem, a death, whatever, in, within the family and you had one of the parcels that would go up for sale, I think it would be very prudent that the people that are wanting these subdivisions make that very clear to them that they, someone within the family needs to buy that property to maintain.
We, I mean, we could make it clear, but.
I mean, I'd, I'd have that highlighted, underlined in bold letters.
Yeah, I.
Because I hate somebody say, well, I didn't see that part, you know.
Yeah.
But when they make application for this specific subdivision, I mean, it's going to hit home. But at some point in time, someone's going to try to rule and, and get to a point of saying whatever they're declaring their hardship to be. And I think that's the warning that planning and development gave us from day one that it's inevitable further down the road, this thing is going to come back up. Yes, sir.
And that is the very purpose for a recorded document when these things are done, that there's some sort of an agreement about these things that gets recorded on the public records. That is essentially a hold harmless for the county, don't expect roads and maintenance out of the county. But also it's on the public records and the title companies and stuff should be pulling it up when they do a title search.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So you think that recorded document's gonna keep her from asking?
Probably not, but.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank the planning department, Mike Brown, particularly you. I know this is a hybrid classification of a subdivision, but we have countless people asking for it, you know, especially in the rural farming community. It means a lot to them and I know it'll take tweaking, but thank you for your creative time that you did with this.
Again, that's the sentiment of all of us. Let me make sure for the benefit of all concerned that Exhibit B, the alternative draft ordinance is what we are prepared to take action on. Is that everybody's understanding?
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
At the next meeting.
Say that again, Chair.
We're gonna take action on it at the next meeting.
But this is the first reading, we still have to vote, right?
No.
I don't think so.
Okay, very good.
Don't have to move it forward, it's fine with me.
All right, so staff does understand we're moving forward with Exhibit B.
I think Mandy had a question.
I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, i- if we're going to switch number, on page ninety-nine, number E, it can be sold to another person.
Yes, I said that, but I just wanted it very clearly stated to, within the family, they, they do know that this would.
They could never develop another lot and they only get one homestead out of the whole thing. But also, I, I guess what we need to make sure is that the person that buys it, that's not a family member, knows that that road's never gonna be taken care of by the county. So that's what you're talking about, just wanna make sure we're on the same line.
Right, and, and you're, and you're dead on. But also that the family that's creating this subdivision knows that if it's within their power, it would behoove them to absorb that through some family member versus an outsider.
Okay, sounds like a plan, moving forward. Item eleven, public hearing, proposed road closing, resolution vacating a portion of an unnamed easement located at twelve fifty-three County Road three oh nine, Willaka.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There is an easement at twelve fifty-three County Road three oh nine in Willaka that splits between two parcels, one owned by Ms. Judith Flum and one owned by Ms. James Wood. And they've come before us asking that we vacate this easement and abandon it so that they can enjoy the use of that themselves without the public. Going across their property to the end of it to use a pond, we have no problem with that. We contacted utilities, it's not used by the public other than these two property owners. And the utility said, just AT&T, that if they had an easement there, that's all they ask for. We don't ask for anything else other than the request that this be approved and that the, the two property owners sign that easement over to AT&T.
So what kind of, where do we fit in the equation as it relates to, do we have to ensure that AT&T is?
Well, we, we provide an easement, a document, and we have it, we're just bringing it over this morning. We actually have Ms. Flum and Ms. Wood, Mr. Wood in the back here, and they're ready to sign the easement as soon as it comes over here.
Counsel. In whose favor does the easement run?
Uh, for, for AT&T.
No, 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 the one you're vacating.
Well, if we vacate this easement, it, it seems that, that easement will be shared by both.
There's an easement, there's existing easement that you're vacating.
It is a public easement.
There's a document creating that easement that runs in favor of the public?
Uh, yes, it, it's an unnamed easement, that's what we found. And there, there isn't a name to that, but it's just an easement.
There's a document that creates it?
Uh, as far as we are aware.
Official record book twenty-two, page two oh one, what does it say?
I'm not aware of exactly what it says, but it was found by our right-of-way agent.
Okay, but the right-of-way agent did not include. It's just saying that the unnamed easement is not a public road, but the roadway is physically open. But there had to be a purpose for the one point three acre, it was twenty feet in width, two hundred and ninety-eight in length from the easterly property line. Does either of the owners know why there would have been an easement in the beginning?
It, it appears that it probably, it would have served parcels to the rear of that when it was originally dedicated. But there is no other use and, and no one else, there is no road there that uses this easement.
Is it gonna hamper someone to possibly getting the property that's back there or not?
Well, the, if you could look at page one twenty-six, you can see that all the other parcels are long, thin parcels and they all have access from County Road three oh nine.
There's those flag lots, flag-shaped lots that Brian loves.
What kind of lots?
Flag-shaped. Near, near access and then there's your property. Oh, sorry.
So it, it doesn't hinder anybody's access to any of the parcels.
Okay, this is a public hearing, we will certainly hear from Mr. Wood or Ms. Flum or any other citizens that may feel impacted in any way, shape, form, or fashion or concerning or closing a portion of this unnamed easement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Robert.
Hey, Robert.
You felt this calling for you?
I think he's quick.
Yeah.
There he is.
He's, he's good, good associate attorney there.
Oh, okay.
You walk right into that. Do you all have any, any concerns about the, the easement as it relates to you, you don't want it to happen or you want it to happen with?
We want it to be, to be resolved because it goes through, it goes alongside my property and it goes to her property. Originally, all that property was owned by my grandmother and she split it up. And when she put that easement in, she went all the way to the end of the property line.
Do you know why she put it in in the beginning?
It was.
Okay, you, ma'am, you're gonna have to speak into Mike if you're going to speak to us, come closer to the microphone so we can hear what you're saying.
Okay, what it was is she had four kids, so she split the property up four ways. And one piece went all the whole length, but she split that piece in half. Because my uncle was in the military and my aunt, my other aunt lived in Jacksonville, so that easement was put in there. So my uncle would have, would be able to get to that back piece of property. You can still go to that back piece of property, but we wanted to stop it at that point where it joins her property. Instead of going all the way to the end of my, and to all the way to the end of the property, there's no reason for it to be the, to go all the way to the end.
Because it could always be a road foot at the first part of that property to the back off the private property that I own. If I wanted, you know, any driveway or anything through there.
There's easement on her side of the property from, from three oh nine all the way to the river, because that man owns property to the river. And then on the other side of my property, there's another easement that goes through that property, that goes, goes all the way to the river because that person owns all that property.
Okay, thank you so much for your commentary, public works. So we are not creating any future foreseeable issue that would create a lack of interest and egress?
No, it shouldn't, because all the parcels all have the access.
You say no, it shouldn't.
They all, they all have access.
Okay.
I guess the question that I would have, so on this paper it says Bryant owns those pieces and I see there's a strip that comes out to the road.
Mr. Bryant owns one piece, Bryant's own one piece directly behind my property and then behind Judy's property, there is a man by Mr. Hilton, he owns the other piece.
I see Hilton, okay. What I was wondering is this strip that comes out to the road, does it go through low land? Is there a swamp there or some reason that he could not?
And it goes down to the river, the river is more like, is more swampy than mine, mine's all, all of our property is high and dry.
Okay, I, I guess the only other question I had is usually the county can't, does not own an easement, it's just the right to travel over the property. So ownership is vested in someone else. I was thinking, wouldn't that be a problem to?
The county can vacate any interest it has in any public or private easement. It doesn't have to even have any ownership or even a claim of ownership. It would be interesting to just know in whose favor this easement ran to start with, but did you know, Robert?
Um, I'm not sure.
I, I don't, I don't think it's a big deal, the adjacent property owners are in favor of it. It's not blocking any access, it's not open to the public now, the county is not claiming any interest, but the statute does say that the county does not have to claim any interest in order to vacate any public rights to it.
So kinda like a quitclaim deed, if we have any interest, we're giving it, okay.
Exactly right.
Thank you.
A quitclaim vacation.
Okay, so the Bryant owners, they don't have any adverse effect, correct?
They have their own private road in.
Okay, any further public hearing discussions? I'll close the public hearing at this time, commissioners. Entertainer motion to adopt resolution vacating the portion of the unnamed easement located at twelve fifty-three County Road three oh nine, Willaka.
I move approval.
Approval with the understanding that it's contingent upon the property owners providing utility easement to AT&T.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, further discussion? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District three, yes. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, just for future reference, Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we have these contingencies, we don't process or record these documents until those contingencies are satisfied, is that right? Thanks.
Don, hey, Don. Thank you, Shannon. So say we all. Okay, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Just real quick, Robert, are you leaving? Are you staying?
What are you on to do?
The bid's on y'all.
Well, I, I wanted to make mention of something you've been working on and I wanted to give you some kudos while you were here present.
He might not want any kudos.
He does, he wants this. Kudo, I call them kudos, you call them kudos, I call them kudos.
Most people call them kudos, but.
I'm going with kudos. Robert's been working on a, getting easement for me and my, one of my areas in the district on some drainage issues and just, it's taken just about since I've gotten here, but he has finally gotten it done and the drainage work has begun and every, and we heard mention about it. Someone I talked about Davis Lake Road today and the work that's being done there and getting that easement to where we could drain that water and get it out to Highway nineteen to where it can make its way toward the river and I, and I just wanted to give you kudos and kudos for, for that hard work. And it's a lot of parcels, a lot of interaction with a lot of property owners and he's, he just did a great job and I wanted to.
And my, we're still working on it, it's not totally complete.
Yeah, but you, you're making, you're making great progress.
All right, thank you, thank you for your leadership.
Is his name on the attorney list, Mr. Leary?
Leading candidate.
All right, let's continue to move forward. Item twelve, code enforcement, John Salmons is here, fine reduction, case number twenty-twelve, that's double oh two sixty-one, Derek Shaw. Mr. Shaw, are you present?
He is present.
Hey, super, just stay close and we'll talk in just a moment. Mr. Salmons, you're on, sir.
Okay, this is case two thousand twelve, zero zero two six one, as you mentioned, one oh eight Broadway. The property was first seen on March twentieth, two thousand twelve. Staff was present with the sheriff's office and the power company, the building division. The house was tagged as unsafe, a notice of hearing was sent out on May twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve. At the, the July nineteenth, two thousand twelve hearing, the special magistrate continued the case for ninety days because there was a new owner who was Mr. Shaw. On October eighteenth, two thousand twelve, the case went back before the special magistrate, Mr. Shaw was not present on that day. The special magistrate found the property being violated and gave Mr. Shaw until January sixteenth, two thousand thirteen to bring the property into compliance. Case went back before the special magistrate on March twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. Mr. Shaw was present at this hearing, he requested more time to complete the renovations. The special magistrate gave him until April twentieth, two thousand thirteen to bring the property into compliance. Mr. Shaw boarded up the structure and called staff on April twenty-second, nine, two, two thousand thirteen. He said he was gonna get a safety permit to see what needed to be done to the dwelling, he obtained the permit, but wasn't present to allow the inspector inside. When the inspector went to the property, lien was ordered on March twenty-first, two thousand thirteen and recorded on August twenty-second. The property was determined to be in compliance on January tenth, two thousand fourteen. Mr. Shaw requested a fine reduction hearing at that time. The special magistrate heard the, Mr. Shaw's request on April sixteen, two thousand fifteen. Recommended that the six thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollar fine be reduced to a thousand dollars, it's paid within ninety days. Rationale for the recommendation was Mr. Shaw brought the property into compliance after the case had been opened. Mr. Shaw did bring, he bought the property, excuse me, after the case had been opened, kind of early in this process. Mr. Shaw did bring the property into compliance, but it took some time. A thousand dollars fee covers the extra cost of processing the case from the beginning to the end, although it really was a thousand and three dollars. But this was a case that went to the special magistrate prior to our last meeting and we rounded it off to a thousand. Mr. Shaw was not happy about that and he can tell you why.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Salmons, Mr. Shaw, if you state your name, again, just for the record.
Derek William Shaw.
Okay, good.
Like he says on here, it says January tenth, two thousand fourteen, it said I was in compliance. And then, well, since April twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, nothing had changed. So it's right there saying we were in, in compliance the whole time, like I don't understand what we were not in compliance with. I was in contact with Ms. Jenkins all the time, like asking her what needed to be done and like, like I said, I called on that day. And it's, Ron, here it says I was in compliance and nothing changed to the property between those days, so I'm still curious about the fine.
Okay, so you're saying nothing happened between April and January?
Yeah, as far as to the property, we did, we had it boarded up and everything, I called on that day and it was boarded and locked up, that's what they told me needed to be done.
Okay, Mr. Salmons, you want to address that issue? If, if, he's saying he was in compliance back in April of two thousand thirteen and we're saying that the property was determined to be in compliance January two thousand fourteen, what is, what's the issue?
Uh, Mr. Myers was a building official back in two thousand thirteen, I believe, and he was not willing to accept basically the structure being boarded up with the interior not being complete. Mr. Powell is now a building official. He went out and I think he had conversation with Mr. Shaw that they would do a, an exterior, make sure everything was okay there. And then at some point in the future, you'd have to pull permits to do the interior work. The property that's on the screen is, was taken last week, it's different from the one that was in your, in your packet that was from back when it was originally complied. So I can't tell you, I'm not, wasn't involved in the case other than I think the difference in the two building officials is the reason why there's a, a different.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Mr. Shaw, so based upon that, what are you suggesting to us that the magistrate didn't?
I mean, I would just like there to be no fine, to be honest, I thought I've always been in compliance, you know, of course I want the property to be up and running and living. But before I purchased it, it was, I don't know if any of you guys have been out there, but it was pretty ran down. The police had been out there multiple times, I'd heard it, I feel it looks like a mansion compared to how it used to look. But of course, you know, I'm a regular guy working a regular job, it's more, it's my first investment property, so, you know, the goal is to get it up and running, you know. But it's just, you know, time and, you know, time and money are where it's short at the moment. But taxes and everything's are paid up to it since I've owned it.
Okay, so we'll go back to staff and again, commissioners chime in whenever you do get ready. But I guess my question to Mr. Salmons would be, knowing that you know what you know with there being a change in CBOs and things of that nature, is there a? is there a secondary recommendation that comes from the department that, you know, maybe the magistrate certainly did not recognize the point that you just raised?
You know, I, to me, from my point of view, it's legal to board up a structure if it meets the housing code. This still does not meet the housing code. So, I, I guess I'm of the opinion that probably Mr. Myers was, which is unusual because we didn't agree on much. But this property is not livable. And from our point of view, from my point of view, if it's buildable, if it's livable and you choose to board it up, that's one thing. But to, to have a structure that's basically boarded up in a neighborhood.
So, is, so are you saying to us that even though this would close the case, that the case is actually really not closed, that it could come back?
Well, I, the building official says that this is okay. So, I'm, I'd have to agree with the building official that if he's willing to let him do that, then that's fine. I guess if, if you wanna follow that logic, then probably he was in compliance back at the earlier date.
So, how long do, do we allow boarded up structures to sit around before they're not in compliance?
That's, I guess that's my point is when, when he agreed to do this basically a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, it really hasn't changed much since then. There's been no permits pulled to do the interior. And I guess if Mr. Shaw's in the business to either fix this up and sell it or rent it out, it seems like he would be moving forward with that, and he hasn't done that. But.
So currently, he's in compliance based on our current building official?
Correct.
And he wasn't before?
Right.
But again, the question goes, how far do we allow boarded up structures to sit there and exist without being blight?
I guess that's why I have my opinion that I have, is that if it's boarded, if, if, if it meets the housing code, minimum code, if it can be habitable and somebody chooses to, to not habitate it, that's one thing. Because there's nothing that says you can't board up a structure. But if it's a structure that, that is not complete and can't be used the way it's designed to be used, then I have a problem with it just sitting here for five, ten years.
Should we have a timeframe built into our building code that if you allow a boarded up building that?
I'm not privy to his, Mr. Shaw's discussions with Mr. Powell, and Mr. Powell's a.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about Mr. Shaw. I'm talking about just the building as a whole. It doesn't matter who it belongs to.
The ultimate goal for everybody here is, including Mr. Shaw, is to have it up, up the code and going. I don't know what his timeframe is. That might be something that you would like to condition a lower fee.
Why don't you say that the building code is not within your purview?
I could say that.
That was the question.
All right, that works. Brian Hammond.
Two things. We have had, of course, a change in building official. We have had two-thirds of our code enforcement staff disappear since then. So, we have a lot of new faces. Secondly, yes, we do have a different viewpoint of the current building official. It is something we need to deal with internally. This is the first time it's really come up. And, but policy-wise, it's something we will deal with internally about this. No, I don't agree that we need to have a specific time or default to specific, you know, base fees, to cap fees in any way. We have to have our leverage in order to get enforcement. But the problem is with these, if we allow the boarding up of a structure, then it can stay that way indefinitely. That's the problem with this, this policy. And we are gonna have to revisit that.
Okay, thank you so much. I need to go to Commissioner Liveau, Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Pelosi, back to Harvin, and back to Clay.
Mr. Shaw, what year did you buy the house? What date?
It was purchased through Gullett on seven, eight, twelve.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, seven, eight, twelve is when the actual purchase was taking place. And based upon what we have here, the boarded up situation was four thirteen. Is that right?
We also put a brand-new roof on it as well.
Okay, so all that happened in a nine-month period, is what you're saying?
It was after we purchased it, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Harris.
Okay. That, that's what I was gonna say. What have you done to it? It looked like a new roof was on it.
Like I said, it looks, it looks like a brand-new house compared to, I don't know if you, have y'all heard of the area?
We have pictures with debris all around in the yard.
You know, every kinda thing else was back there. But, you know, of course, it's, just with me, I just, I'm a single guy working by myself, you know, just in town here. You know, we, at first, we started real good on it, but it just funds and money kinda ran out.
Mr. Shaw, do you have a timeframe that you've set for yourself to have it ready with a building permit and occupancy, just in your mind?
My next steps into it are doing like plumbing and electrical, because that's what it needs next on it. It needs a two-hundred surface upgrade on it and new plumbing. Those are the next steps. But, you know, I worry about getting a new upgraded amp out there and not being out there to watch it because of the previous, you know, they stole power from it and the house burned down next door. So, I don't wanna go put thousands of dollars into it, come back to my current house, and then, you know, not leaving it out there like this. Who knows what could, you know, they could come steal everything I put in.
All of those things are potentials and possibilities, but I still had a question for you that actually.
I mean, I, I don't, I, it can't be livable tomorrow. So, I mean, I don't know. I would, I don't, I don't have a.
Is it a one-year plan, a three-year plan, a five-year plan? Do you have any of that? The person that's with you wanna whisper something to you? Okay, sir, if you gotta come up here and state who you are, and then you don't have to be silent, you can talk.
I tried. My name's Michael Edenfield. I'm partners with Mr. Shaw. Technically, this is his, but I have been helping him along the way. He's correct. He's a stock guy at Home Depot. So, understand, even the roof took months of saving. This is a process. When, as we all know, we're having the same problems you have. Money. Nobody has any money. Nobody wants to give any money, and we ran into a problem there. I have other rental properties here in town. Our idea with this neighborhood originally was to do the same thing that we've done here in town over on Alabama Avenue and back through there, was to take a bad neighborhood and turn it into a nice, livable family neighborhood. I know the area, I know the families that's in there. The county's taking care of everything else, pretty much. This is a good, sound structure. We.
When did you pay it off?
December of last year. It was just initially paid off, just months ago, basically. And he's been going along. I think he's been doing really good. If the structure wasn't as sound as it was, I wouldn't be so into it. But it's a really good, sound structure. It's not a bad neighborhood. It just become a bad neighborhood due to all the people getting older, dying off, moving out. They've become a bad neighborhood. This county is ridiculous on trying to improve and vamp properties. It's like an all-or-nothing thing. Either you want it all this way, which most of people in Putnam County don't have money to go out and spend fifty, sixty thousand dollars making everything just the way that you want it. And I understand the cleanup. Believe me, I understand the cleanup, which was our idea. We actually wanted all three lots that's adjacent there, and that was our idea. Same thing we did in town over on Alabama. Come in and take one, clean it up, fix it up, get a family in there, and start making these family structures again. Mr. Shaw, like I said, just got it paid for. It will take months. We have other rental that adds to it, that helps pay for this. Because if it was out of our pockets, we would be even more tied. But we have another rental that does add to this, that's paying for this. Hopefully, through the summer, what I don't wanna do is, like he said, make improvements and then something happen to it. What we wanna do is get it to the point where we can do the electric and the plumbing and get that all done at one time. We brought siding out, come back two weeks later, it's gone. Okay? So, we have to get at least to a point where we can get the block there and get lights on so that we can put up security and have some kinda functioning.
Let me, let me apologize for cutting you off, but let me assure you of this. Number one, this commission works with our citizens. Our department works with our citizens. Every case has its own uniqueness. The thing that we don't want is to close the case and then the case is open. It may not be directly your fault, but if you guys, due to whatever situation or circumstance, come up, vagrants take, take it back over and, you know, and a whole bunch of things happening, now we got a brand-new case. We want it, we want it to disappear just like you do. However, we can't just ignore, you know, the recommendation that's before us. And then hearing the information that, you know, the department has, has made here, my, my, and I know I wanna hear from my colleagues here, but I think we need to send this case back to the department minimally. They can decide whether the magistrate need to be involved because there are some internal things that this case is related to as it relates to the change of building official and bring the case back to us. I would be more comfortable with the department looking at the change of philosophy or, you know, or the difference of opinion there, and then it coming back to us. That's just my opinion. District one, thank you.
Yes, I. I think one thing that's outstanding in this case that takes precedence to me is that the building official had contact with him and said that it's okay. I assume it was getting to be like a drug house. It was, vagrants were in there. And so, you have, you've made it airtight, you've secured it, and you've blocked it up. So, you've gotten rid of the number-one problem in the neighborhood, and you're going forward with improvements.
Technically, we cleaned up hundreds of feet around the house. Because what happened, the county had come in and done that ahead of us, had moved out everybody to some degree. Well, they just moved into the woods, right behind the house. And they were having little camps in there. So, we went back in and cleaned up. You can't really tell them the pictures, but we went in and cleaned up over to the adjacent house because there was a jungle in between there. So, now the neighbors can all look and see immediately what's going on there. We've opened up the whole area so that other people can see in. There's older people and family people that's been there for years and years. I've known some of these people, Robert, that's been in there for fifty, sixty years, I guess. My whole life. And that's it. And that's the reason I told him initially, buy this piece of property. That's family-owned around there. The vagrants just moved in, and one of the family members that was there was in a bad scene. The big thing with the fine, all this is here, whatever. The big thing with the fine, in the beginning, we are, I do contracting work here. I've worked for a contractor and have worked for contractors here for twenty years. I thought we were in compliance. Everything that Ms. Jenkins said when he called for the safety inspection. Now, I thought the safety inspection was to make sure it was boarded up and locked up. I believe, I even told him, no biggie, they don't have to look at anything except boards and padlocks. I didn't realize someone had to be there for the safety inspection.
Let me, let me make it plain. We're not talking about compliance in this meeting. We're not addressing compliance. We're addressing a fine that he feels is unreasonable. And that's why I was suggesting that staff maybe need to tell us, since there is a, you know, an issue that, that one building official had it. So, we're not talking about trying to put this man out of compliance. That's not the issue at all. The issue is, is a thousand dollars, even though the original fine was six thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars, is a thousand dollars still too much of a fine? And rather than for us just to reach in a hat and grab a number out, I think if staff would tell us and at least work with those individuals, knowing what you know, bring us the same kinda recommendation back, then everybody can win. And this man can continue to invest in and make the property better.
For sake of brevity, if the board would allow us, if the board would take no action on this, just let us take this back and see if we can, see what we can work out with the owner of the property. We, of course, want the thing cleaned up.
Yes, sir.
We, of course, are not gonna give them forever.
Correct.
They're still not in compliance under the housing code. Therefore, again, we'll work with them, but we will not give them forever.
Can we just table, commissioners?
Yes, I'm. Well, go ahead and ask everybody.
Consensus?
I'm good with that, but I'd like to see some updated pictures, for sure. Those are far too outdated. And.
Picture on your screen right now was taken last week.
Pardon? I don't, I don't, I got, I got nothing.
Hit your button.
You don't have screen?
I got nothing.
Relax, bud.
Yeah.
Thought mine just stayed on because it.
It's, can you see up there on that screen?
Well, you might.
You got it now. I got a glare, but I'm, think I'm seeing something. Yeah, I see the new roof.
Okay. Entertainer motion to table?
Yeah.
Proper motion, second.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You oppose, hearing that motion carry. Thank you for your labor, and please stay in constant contact with the department.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item thirteen, county administrator Rick Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We previously had discussions about the fact that the solid waste disposal fee that we've established, Palaca Housing Authority has not paid the fee that the county feels is rightfully due. We've had some meetings with the representatives from the Palaca Housing Authority, and they have an opinion that they are not obligated to pay the full fee that is currently at two hundred and sixty-five dollars per housing, residential housing unit. We think the county staff feels that that fee is applicable to each of the individual units assigned to the housing authority. And of course, as I said, they don't, representatives of the housing authority do not feel that that fee is, is an obligation, that that entity is rightfully owed to the county. We don't see any resolution to our respective opinions and positions on this issue. So, our suggestion is that we send a final communicate to the housing authority and requesting payment. If we do not receive a positive response to that communicate, we assign the matter to the legal department.
Thank you very much, Senator. I do see the executive director, Mr. Nelson, here. Mr. Nelson, come forward, and if you wanna share with us some information that may update us, then we certainly will be grateful. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Been a long morning. John Nelson, Palaca Housing Authority, commissioners? As was stated by Mr. Leary, we do not agree that there is, you know, a delinquent amount of money owed to the, to the county. In accordance with state statute four twenty-three point oh two, the housing authority is exempt from taxes and special assessments. But we may agree to pay, in lieu of such taxes, okay, a payment, quote-unquote, in lieu of taxes, which we have done. The housing authority board approved a payment of eighty-nine dollars per unit. And to date, we are current with that payment.
Do you know when that agreement?
That agreement was made in two thousand and ten.
Is that a, in a local agreement, Mr. Leary, what are you saying?
Is it an agreement or is it a unilateral decision of your board?
Uh, no, it's agreement.
You have a copy of it with you?
Uh, the agreement?
Yes.
Uh, nope. I do have copies of the letter.
We've asked for it several times, and we've never seen one.
Well, all I got is the letter. Were signed by Mr. Leary, saying that we would make that payment. And that was back in two thousand and ten.
Okay, now, when you're saying.
I can get it to you. I may not have it with me today, but we've been making those payments since that time period, and we are current with those payments. The state statute says in black and white, point by point, that we are exempt, but we may, not shall, we may agree to make a payment. And we have done that.
Okay, so when you say there's an agreement, they're kinda elaborate on that, you're saying it's a letter that the county agreed that the eighty-nine dollars? But was there ever any inter-local agreement, to your knowledge?
That was the, that was the agreement in two thousand and ten, that we would make payments at eighty-nine dollars per unit. And I'm trying to look through my notes, and I think I don't have it here.
Saying it was not a unilateral. It's not that the housing authority decided, this is all we can afford to pay, and this is all we're paying. You're saying the county and the housing authority agreed on this amount?
Well, yes. Uh, that was the agreement that was made at that time. We also had discussions about recycling, and that recycling fee and the pickup fee or the tipping fee was agreed to at that time, and we've been making those payments.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, in two thousand and, I don't, I don't have that letter in front of me either, but in two thousand and ten, the county may have acknowledged that it would accept eighty-nine dollars as payment. But I doubt very seriously that the county agreed in two thousand and ten to accept eighty-nine dollars as payment in full, odd if an item, for solid waste disposal fee.
Mr. Nelson, weren't, weren't. Mr. Nelson, weren't, wasn't the county billing you X amount and then showing a delinquent balance that you owed, even after this alleged agreement you're talking about?
Yes, you were. However...
Clearly, the county was not saying that that was what we were accepting.
However, that was the number that was agreed to, and whether you billed us in excess of that number is beside the point.
You think the county agreed to bill you only eighty-nine and continued, but showed you as being delinquent, just for the heck of it?
That agreement was made then. We paid then. When you increased the amount, okay, that's when we said, no, we continued to pay the eighty-nine dollars. At that point, you began billing us the total amount, showing what we paid and said you owe us. Okay, and as our contention, that we don't owe you. We paid you everything that we agreed to pay. Okay, that's number one. Number two, that the state statute, and unless, you know, the county is saying the state statute doesn't mean anything.
I'm saying I have definitely a totally different interpretation of it than you do, and you're well aware of that, sir.
Well, all I can say that is...
Our issue right now, then, I mean, we have two issues. Obviously, one is a delinquency on the county's side of the equation and not the Palaka Housing Authority's side of the equation. And then we have a difference of opinion as to the interpretation or the analysis of the statute. So we have two issues. The first issue that has to be, I guess, resolved is the 423.02 there. Can we get an opinion on that?
From?
AG, or from where? I mean, where do we normally get that kind of an opinion from? Is there any case law or something out there?
No, there is absolutely no case law. We could request an attorney general's opinion, yes.
Okay. I think that would probably be the first step there. And then, once we can get that opinion, we share that with the Palaka Housing Authority Executive Director. And then, you know, whether there's an agreement or disagreement there, and whether there's a resolution, some kind of mediation, because at some point, we do know resolution has to occur, one way or the other, because we are running a pretty serious deficit there, and all of the other citizens, you know, are paying. And we do understand pelt, payment in lieu of taxes, but we wanna make sure that everything is properly applied there. District One?
Yes, I was going to say, if we could get an opinion from the attorney general, maybe that would settle it. And then, maybe we could do an arbitration or mediation instead of going to court. It would cost everybody less money.
Resolution and voluntary compliance, obviously, is what we're aiming for. Thank you, District One. District Two, you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
District Four?
You know, I really do. I'm hearing from my constituents, well, if they don't have to pay, I don't have to pay. And clearly, you say may, we may pay for the fees and taxes, but you're getting services. You're getting your garbage hauled away to the landfill, and the taxpayers of Putnam County are footing that, Mr. Nelson. I don't see how you can honestly stand there and go, we shouldn't have to pay or pay a reduced rate. When we're telling our citizens of Putnam County, they have to pay the same thing. They're getting the same, the same benefit for it. Now, the bottom line is, if we could identify what truck picks it up and just turn that away, what would y'all do with it then? Or it would just pile up? So you're getting the services, but you're not wanting to pay as the rest of the citizens of Putnam County are paying. And that's not fair. That's just not fair.
Mr. Harvey, whether or not there's agreement that it's fair or not, the state statute was written, it's a statute that applies not only to Putnam County, but to every housing authority in the state of Florida. It applies to every housing authority, okay, in the United States. It's a very similar, you know, resolution.
So we should just take all that garbage and just, and let the citizens of Putnam County absorb the cost?
There is a cost for providing housing to those families who would otherwise be on the street. There is a cost for doing that. And every city in the United States shares in paying that cost. Okay? The statute, which I am prepared to give you a copy of, is very clear. You can ask Attorney General opinion, and I'm sure that he has given opinion. There's one out there. But the statute itself is very clear about being exempt for taxes and special assessments and services. State, city...
Being exempt from services?
Excuse me, just a second. Let's keep this, we're not going to resolve it here today. We do understand that. Yes, sir, that can certainly be distributed there. But I think that my question would be, if in fact, the housing authority agreed to continue paying X amount of dollars, what was it based on? What formula did the Board of Directors or the Board of Commissioners, what did they use in 2010 to help them to, to at least say, this is a proportionate number to the cost to, you know, to the citizens there? We do understand subsidizing, and we understand, you know, having to supplement when it comes down to lower-income citizens there who need public housing. I'm a product of public housing. I was raised in public housing there, and so I'm not against public housing. But I do also know there's no free ride, and that at some point in time, we do need to come to some happy meeting ground to understand that the county cannot have whatever the percentage is, and I have not done the math of subsidy here, that we can't afford it, just as I heard in a previous setting, that the housing authority can't afford some certain things because you've got a limited budget. We can't afford some things, because at whatever point in time, we're, we have an unfunded mandate here because we've got X amount of units that are not even paying, not even tipping us, rather than paying the fee. And so, we're not gonna resolve it here. Yes, sir, counsel?
Can I just ask one question, maybe bring it home? Mr. Nelson, you pay the city to collect this garbage, correct?
That's correct.
Do you pay their full rate, or you get a discount?
The rate that is paid to the city was one that was agreed to...
That's not what I asked.
That's the answer you get, sir. All right?
Pay different?
The rate that is paid to the city, no matter what it is, was one that was agreed to.
Okay.
Which the state, what the state statute says, we may agree between the city and the housing authority.
Okay, end of discussion. Did you have any other questions, sir? Did you have any questions, sir? Okay, at this particular point in time, counsel, if you will follow through, get the AG opinion. We'll keep it on the agenda there. We'll keep Mr. Nelson and his board informed as to the next step that's there, if there's validity in the questions. Everybody has a position. Let's find out the analysis, the intent of the law, and then let's also find out what's equitable for Putnam County and Palaka Housing Authority. I think that, to me, is the key to us moving forward, because we've gotta move forward. We cannot have an impasse with our Palaka Housing Authority, which is an entity that is necessary in our county. And at the same time, we can't be at odds with our county, who's having to provide the services and cannot afford to provide the services on the discounted model that we're currently using. So we'll talk some more about it. Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Now, you got some things to leave with us? Yes, sir, by all means. Mr. Leary, what else do you have, sir?
Nothing beyond the appointments that are listed, if any board member has any that they wanna make, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to go ahead and appoint Gwen Moats to the Fair Board, Fair Authority. I'm sorry.
All right. Do we have an appointment to the Library Board?
I do not, right now.
Okay, it's the only appointment we have now, is Mr. Moats for the Fair Authority, District Four. We have a proper motion for the appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Castleberry, do you have anything else, sir?
No.
Honorable Tim Smith?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly. District One? District Two, anything else?
I'm good.
District Four?
Yes, sir, I do. Two weeks ago, I had, I invited Jesse Penusio, the Director of the Department of Economic Opportunity to Putnam County, and he met with a few people, including myself, met with Mr. Leary, came here to the building. And they have a Competitive Florida grant that could come to Putnam County. The timing is really crucial. It's June 17th, if I'm not mistaken here, that we would have to get all the partners together. But I'm going to, I talked to Dana when she got back from her trip in the Chamber of Commerce, and see if we can't try to make this happen, where they would come down and look at our asset mapping here in the county and do kind of a partner with us, with all the players of economic development, to try and see what kind of plan we could come up with to move Putnam County forward. And I'll bring more information as it goes along.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I just had one comment about that. We had the Department of Economic Opportunity come before, and when we did, we got a bus, and we toured the county, and we treated them right, and we really welcomed them, and all of us were part of it. I would like for all of us to be part of something like that when someone comes down, because we might think of something that you might not know, or have something to contribute, but we all want to bring that forward. So I just wanted to say, if someone's invited again, it would be nice if we could all contribute.
And Commissioner Harris, it was not intended to be slighted by any way. It was a matter of, the director was very concerned about all the commissioners being in the same room at the same time.
We would announce it as a public meeting.
So we would have to, and he's willing to come back any time.
We did it before it was announced as a, as a meeting that was properly advertised. Thank you, District One. District Five, anything?
No, sir.
Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Come on in.
Commissioners will reconvene as part of the Transportation Committee at 2 o'clock today in the conference room, Suite 200. Thank you.